Good evening, everyone. This is February 9th, 2022. Lakeville Select Board acting as wage and personnel board as needed, remote meeting. Is anyone other than Lake Cam recording this meeting? I don't see anyone's hand raised. I don't see anything in the chat. All right. In accordance with provisions allowed by Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, the February 9, 2022 public meeting of the Lakeville Select Board will be held remotely. To view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com backslash Lake Cam, and you should not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. The meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv backslash. All right, with us tonight, we have several department heads. And first and foremost, we have the Finance Committee, and I do believe we are seeing the quorum, so I will turn that over to you, Mr. Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It looks like we have a full house tonight. I will call the Lakeville Finance Committee meeting to order at 6:31. Take attendance. Katie?
Present.
Adam?
Present.
Larry?
Present.
Brian?
Present.
And Darren, present.
All right, so this is the third night of budget. Proposed budget meetings where we, since Monday, Monday night last night, we sit down with the various department heads and we discuss their proposed budget for the 2023 year. This is the budget that will get approved at the May and hopefully get approved at the May annual meeting. So without further ado, I think we first on the list, unless Ari, there's anything else we need to discuss before this?
No, I don't think so. We have some scheduling issues. We'll talk about that when we get closer to the capital plan.
Okay, so I know yesterday, right at the beginning, we had some questions that were left over from Monday night. We answered those first, but I don't recall having anything like that from last night. So we can go right into inspectional services, and that would be with Nate Darling, who is our Building Commissioner, Zoning Enforcement Officer and Director of Inspection Services. Did I get all that right?
That sounds good to me.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So.
I'm gonna take right off. Are you on it? You wanna?
Sure, why don't you just take right off?
Over on for me, yeah.
Yep, no, please do.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I'll try to make this as painless as possible. I do have four different segments of my budgets. My Budget Conservation Commission, Board of Health, Building and Facilities. So I don't know if you guys got that up. It's Segment 171 Conservation Commission. Just a small raise on, you know, per the Class Classification and Compensation Plan for the Conservation Agent. Other than that, everything is staying the same. I will bring note that it is more money than we spent on our actual in 2021. That was due to COVID, spending a lot more time out of the office, as well as a little bit of sick time. He is a part-time employee, so he didn't, you know, he wasn't, he wasn't being paid during that time. So I don't know if you have any questions on that before we move on to the Conservation.
Okay, so I think it's been working well. Asking the Finance Committee first if they have any questions. So we'll do that first. I can usually tell by someone unmuting themselves, but you know, let me know if I, if I don't see something. So does anyone have any questions on that from the Finance Committee? I don't see anything. Okay, Lorraine, anything?
Nope, I'm good, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, Rich?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ari, anything from you, Ari or Todd on that?
No, ma'am.
Okay, okay, Nate, that was easy.
Yeah, one out of four. So next is facilities, and I'll just kind of touch upon the high points of the facilities. Starting with the part-time wages. Part-time wages, we had three part-time custodians. They were, the three shared approximately 16 hours a week apiece. What I'm asking for this year is we've taken on additional responsibilities, the building that I'm sitting in right now being one of them. And then, you know, we have some other stuff I'll touch upon, but I'm asking for an additional $6,000, which will bring the three 16-hour-a-week part-time custodians to 318. So it's two hours apiece more than it was last year. On that same vein, we've, we've tried to take a stance that, you know, I need more help as far as pushing projects along, stuff like the Peachtree Roof and even the building that I'm in. So my Assistant Facilities Manager Ted Delaracco has done a tremendous job taking weight off. After I submitted my, my budget for this year, it came up, and I thought that I would ask you all to entertain possible reevaluation of what he currently makes. In my mind, he's taken a lot of burden off, off of me from a project management perspective, and I'm looking to earmark potentially 5,000 extra or in that ballpark pending union and Board of Selectment approval.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
So this has come up in subsequent discussions. I think it's an excellent idea. Ted's is, has been, has really been crucial. And the, yeah, just to provide some comparison, we also have an increase proposed for the Health Agent, and I think there's some synergy there if you, if you do both. The, what I would propose you do is put 5,000 in as a placeholder. You know, we'll then have to come back to you with the job description and the, and the salary, and the board can decide to move forward that way, but just to have a funding there available.
Okay, so it's not in there right now?
Correct. Just, all that's in there now is the 2%.
Yeah, okay. All right, so that's where we would be adding it, would be to that 56, correct?
Yes, right.
Okay. Okay, um, does anyone on the Finance Committee want clarification on that or have any questions on any of the facilities maintenance budget? The proposed budget?
Yeah, could you speak to the 30,000 on the other contracted services? That seems to be a new item this year.
Yes, it is. So like I said, with everything currently going on, we did 3,000 inspections last year, issued 1,900 building permits and took in over $400,000 worth of revenue. That, that speaks to the building spikes. Prior to 2020, I had a lot more time on my hands. I mean, I'd fit stuff in. I'd be writing project scope. I'd be managing the projects. This would put a little bit of money aside to get either an owner's project manager, like we have set in place, you know, a task order project manager. It'd also provide the ability to pay for a consultant to draft a project scope. So if we were going out to bid for a project, I could hire somebody to draft a project scope that would be sufficient to go out to bid for. And we have a lot of projects in the pipeline right now.
So $30,000 seems reasonable for them, based on your?
It does, especially the owner's project manager piece that, you know, it's better than hiring somebody for that position. If it's not needed, we won't use it. If I, you know, if building slows down and I have more time, I would certainly take on those roles, and we wouldn't use that funding.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A quick question for the Building Commissioner, if you don't mind. I liked last year how you rolled all the facility repairs and maintenance into one line item. I was just curious, did you find that worked well last year? I see we're doing it again, and even though we kind of put them in one line item, is it correct we still track each building individually throughout the year, so we know what we're doing?
Yeah, this, this was Todd's idea, and it's really paid dividends for me. So when I look at these projects and I'm responsible for, you know, getting them prepared and organizing them, and then obviously signing off on the end. What was happening prior to this is that I would get this work done, and then I'd go chase around, you know, department heads and get a signature, which wasn't always easy, especially on like a Home Depot bill, where you might have a Home Depot bill with four different departments on it. So, so this, this was Todd's way of simplifying things for me. Each facility, separate facility has a line segment. They're tracked monthly. Todd sends the reports out to me. I think it's a fantastic way of doing it. I think it kind of mirrors the thought process this year of wrapping utilities up. And so we have a utility bill. Yeah, I think you see a lot less overage that way. So if you lump in utilities into one line item, and then you segment out what you're using, you know, some years one might be more, some years some, one might be less. And that's the same thing we see with facilities. We've been doing it this way in facilities. Three years now, and it really works well.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, anyone else from the Finance Committee with a question? Then we'll go to Lorraine, please.
Oh, I think that, you know, Nate's proposal regarding the full-time position is absolutely warranted. So other than that, that's all I have to say about the facilities piece of it.
Okay. Rich?
I guess the only thing that I, you know, I would say is that, you know, Teddy, which is Nate's assistant, you know, it's been extremely difficult for the past two years, and I know that he's worked, you know, some seven days a week in a lot of cases, and he is well-deserving of this. And I think if everybody has the opportunity to go see the, the old library and the renovation, you know, of the old library, it came out fantastic, and he managed that project. So he did a really good job. Now, the next step is he's going to be managing the renovation of the fire station piece after the Board of Health moves out. So those are two pretty large projects. And, and so everybody knows, you know, we're actually on budget for the Old Town Hall Adult Library, excuse me. There's two pieces left that we need to get done. One is the handicap ramp, and the other is to do some fixing the steps, so you know, on the front of the building. So that's kind of where we are.
Okay. Ari, anything further?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and again, I think Todd, wasn't there something I, I asked the other day? Wasn't it, I didn't I say, oh, but we're still keeping it in a chart of accounts, which I think is similar to all the facilities stuff that Nate's been talking about, right? You keep a lot of that stuff, even though we've lumped the final figure on the budget, you still do keep a chart of accounts on a lot of those things, so we know exactly what, what's what, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Um, okay, so that was.
Yeah, do we, do we need a vote?
On?
The 5,000?
So if you'd like to, you can. Otherwise, I think there's consensus. I can certainly.
Okay.
You're gonna be getting another iteration of the budget in next month anyway. So, you know, updated for, the one thing I was gonna talk about scheduling-wise. But there will be another document coming your way.
Okay, yeah, maybe, Lorraine, maybe we'll just wait to actually see the. I don't think anyone from the Finance Committee is opposed, or at least hasn't expressed that. So, all right, okay, so now we have, next?
Now is the building segment. So from Inspeccional Services, you know, a number of years ago, we sought special legislation to pull everybody together. Our clerk pool have all have the same titles, Inspeccional Services Clerk. I think you guys mentioned it last night, where we were trying to cross-train, create redundancy, backup, vacation time, sick time, stuff like that, the ability to do multiple jobs. So, so we, we kind of set the whole department up with, with that in mind. Now, we're glad to hear we got a new town planner in the clerk and Special Services Clerk that was supporting all of the planning department. You know, Tom, the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals is expected to, to convert over to clerical services for the town planner. Once that happens, she's instrumental with Inspeccional Services. She tracks all of our plumbing and gas inspections, reviews applications, schedules, inspections and whatnot. So if you look at the clerical line item, you'll see a reduction from 89,325 to 67,669. What that reflects is a reduction of one-half of a salary or budget person.
Okay.
And that's, that's one of the, I guess, major changes. The other one, which isn't really quite as major, is our part-time inspectors. One thing we gotta remember, part-time inspectors, we're collecting revenue. So the, the pay for these part-time inspectors are offset, to some extent, with the amount of permits that we issue. So last year, for example, in FY '22, you'll see the gas inspector, we had budgeted 14,000. We spent 15,680. So this year, I'm just trying to get, you know, creep up a little bit in anticipation of similar permit numbers as we saw last year. So I'm asking for $1,000 more there, $1,000 more on the plumbing inspector, 2,000 more on the electrical. You'll see that in actuals in 2021, he was 41,000. And again, this, this is directly related to numbers of permits issued and, and revenue collected. For example, the inspectors get $40 an inspection. We collect 50, and 10 of it goes towards administration. So we're always ahead of this curve, regardless of what appears to be highs and lows. So that's, that's there. And then the bigger one is the sealer of weights and measures. So this is something we've been trying to creep up. The sealer of weights and measures, it's kind of a lost art. We're not seeing as many of them around. The town of Lakeville, right now, we have 14 different properties that he has to go to every year. We got two more marijuana facilities coming online, probably within the next two to four months. He's gonna check every single scale in the facility, every single unit of measure, seasons gas, every fuel pump. That gets done every year. So it is a 50% increase, but really it's 4,000 to 6,000. And this is to make sure we maintain current services.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee first, anyone have any questions there?
I just have a quick question. I see it went from 41, and we're budgeting 34 for the electrical. Do we think that's gonna be enough for this year, based on permit numbers, or?
It, it may not be. The, the piece with that is, it's easy enough to transfer money over, and maybe if Todd wanted to speak to it, you know, what I was looking at is typically the plumbing and gas inspector, he averages what the electrical does. We did see the big bump, and it was condo-related, so we got 66 units going at Island Terrace right now. Each one of them has its own electrical permit. Yeah, yeah, there's a, just in one building, there's 165 permits in one building. To go to, yeah, it's, it's a lot, because each unit of the 33 in one building has a plumbing, a gas, an electrical, a mechanical in a building permit. So we are issuing a lot of permits and creating a lot of revenue. And I guess to your point, it might be closer to 40, but I think that 34 is a pretty good placeholder, and we always find ourselves with a little extra in elsewhere that we can offset that if need be.
Thank you.
Brian?
Quick question. First, I hope all those 165 permits pass on the first time since 320 or 480 visits. But I know your inspectors pretty much offset their, their costs with the revenues we generate. But one of the other things, I think, you've explained to me in the past, it might be worth repeating, is just the, the actual revenue that your services bring to the town in general. I mean, do you have an idea of what that's looking like for this fiscal year, or maybe just?
Yes, so the nice thing is that we did write a grant back in 2018, which, which purchased and rolled out Viewpoint, which is an online permit platform. So I, what I do is I track, I can run reports, and I like to, every couple of weeks, I run a 365-day report. I know where we are in average on permits is that $300 to $320,000 a year. Last year, we were over 400. Right now, if I look at where we were for the last 365 days, we're more like 470. So, you know, it was in, you know, there are some, there's some anomalies there. So we're a percent and a half construction cost on commercial. So when you see one of marijuana facility, for example, and you see a large, you know, cost of construction, I mean, we see permits there, $50,000 for a building permit. So, you know, we can't always count on that, and I know it's always better to be safe. But yeah, it was over 400,000 last year, and I expect that'll be the same this year.
It's still an impressive number. Thanks.
So if I could just follow up for, for Brian's question. The first six months of this fiscal year, the Inspeccional Services has brought in approximately a quarter of a million dollars in permit revenue. Wow. For the first six months.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Okay. Anyone else with a question from Finance Committee? Okay, Selectman Carboni, Select Person Carboni?
Select Board Member. No, I'm, I'm actually good on that. It's, I know that there's a lot of work in the inspection, so I think Nate knows pretty much what the balance is. So I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. Follow his lead.
Okay, thanks. Rich?
Madam Chair, I'll say thank you.
Okay, um, final words on this part of the budget from Ari or Todd, anything?
I don't know if it's appropriate now or during capital, but if Nate wants to give a quick update on sort of all the moving, movings around of the various staff, that might be a good, good time to do that. Nate, you wanna weigh in on that?
Yeah, so just for clarification, staff as far as transition to this building.
Physical, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I can definitely do that. So right now, we have Conservation at the Historic Library, myself, my executive assistant, and a part-time clerical assistant that's, that's working on files. We brought, I guess it's around 6,000 files from the Building Department already. We're integrating those into kind of a consolidated file with all archived building plans and building permit applications and in all the various different documents that go with the property. Right now, we're ready to move the Board of Health, which is the last piece of this. We've acquired all of the banker boxes, and we are gonna start bringing stuff over. Once we get about half of the files over here, we're gonna bring at least two of the staff people, get it set up so we can work in the two locations. We got a new coffee machine coming any day now, which will allow us the scanning capability to kind of communicate back and forth. If the town hall, the people that are at the town hall need something, we can just scan it to them, and then vice versa. They can scan it to us. I expect that the transition will be complete probably by the end of February, in which time the Board of Health area will be clean. And to Rich's earlier point, we'll start on to the Fire Department renovations. We'll pull carpets. We'll be putting partitions up, you know, getting the electrical contractor in there, looking at data drops and whatnot that we need to get established there. So I think we're gonna see a lot happening over the next two or three weeks with the move. And then, you know, by the beginning of March, we're gonna be starting that Fire Department downstairs renovation. As far as the upstairs goes, we did already pull all the carpet out of upstairs. All the vinyl composite floor tile went down. It's all been finished. Painter's been there, you know, quite a bit. We have the town, a new carpenter in, in, in line to be doing some counter, new countertops, case openings and stuff like that. So I think we're gonna really see a lot of movement, and this kind of goes back to, you know, where Ted is at in this whole process. I honestly, other than approving invoices, he's done it all. And so that, that's a big help. And the OPM services that, that we funded earlier on with the, you know, water infrastructure improvements and the Highway Department, I don't wanna go too deep into the capital, but all of that too, it's just money very well spent with the fact that, you know, construction activity is so crazy, and I just don't have time to do it. So it's keeping the projects moving along.
Okay. All right, thank you. Was that?
That'll be useful. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thanks, Ari. All right. If that's it on Inspeccional Services, I, let's go to Board of Health, yes?
Yep, so Board of Health, no significant changes. We did identify a few small areas that we saw reductions in, so we were cognizant of that. The big one from the Board of Health side is the Board of Health Agent. And over the last year or so, or two years actually, with, with the COVID crisis, we probably wouldn't have recognized just how lucky we are. Ed Cullen worked eight years with Doctors Without Borders. He was frontlines in pandemics. He establishing, you know, water supplies in third world country, countries. I mean, the guy is probably one of my favorite people that I've ever worked with. He's honest, got a good temperament, and he's just super professional. So it, it kind of urged me to go out and start looking at other communities and what they typically pay. And it, it really opened my eyes. So I started looking at communities like Bridgewater, Dometh East Bridgewater, Matapoyset, Middleborough, Norton, Rainham, you know, Somerset, Rochester. We're finding that every single Board of Health Agent, quite possibly with far less qualifications that Ed Cullen has, that they're all in the $80,000 to $90,000 range a year. This particular year, once we did the cost of living increase, and Ed would only be a 2% increase, which would bring him to 76,406. I'd really like to see if, if we could move up to 82,000 for Ed. That's, that's the big ask for Board of Health. I think his services are super valuable. Like I said, I mean, in the past, we've had some good health agents. It requires a lot of my time for, for management. Ed, zero time to manage the Board of Health. He's amazing.
Okay. Any questions from the Finance Committee on the Board of Health part of the budget? Seeing none, I will go to Lorraine, anything?
No, I think that Nate's proposal is right on mark, and I don't even know if 82 is enough. Thankfully.
All right, Rich?
I'll say, Madam Chair.
Okay, Todd or Ari, last words on that?
Fine, thank you.
Okay, all right, so I think that's all of Nate's four areas. Okay, I think we're good, right? Again, well.
I have, I just, I'd like to thank you all for, you know, your assistance over the last couple of years. And, you know, Todd's always helped me out when I get in a bind. So it's just, it's been great to work with everybody. And like you always say all the time, Leah, as we work with a great group of people, every single one of our employees just always, you know, contribute to the team and, and, and make Lakeville what Lakeville is. So just like to thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. Very well said. Okay, so I know we have a couple of scheduling changes, but next we're going to planning, correct? Yes, okay, all right. Thank you, Nate.
There we go.
All right, there, and here is Mark Resnick, Town Planner. Okay, so this is a new, Ari, this is a new department for us, correct?
Yes, ma'am. We, we took resources that, it's not, the, the budget elements existed elsewhere. So we transferred resources that were in the Select Board, which was the funding you had for the planner, Inspeccial Services, which, which was the support staff and some, some discretionary expenses, and, and from the, and the Planning Board budget. We combined those into a single account, which we're calling Planning. Mark came on a couple of months ago now, has done a really great impact early on. And I think, you know, we've seen the impact certainly in the Planning Board meetings and elsewhere, and just his general presence and having the expertise on board. I'll hand off to Mark. Mark, if you wanna give any, an overview of your budget and any sense of priorities or observations at this point.
Yeah, well, the biggest portion of the budget is salaries.
the biggest portion of the budget is salaries, which is my salary and, uh, the staff salary, which is, would be Kathy's, uh, salary. Um, and of course, then there's some expenses which are just miscellaneous for, uh, training, um, travel dues and, and office supplies, that's pretty standard for a planning department budget is somewhere in, in that range, it's a little low, but that's okay. Uh, COVID, we're not traveling very far, uh, very often, um, so, uh, that is pretty much the roundup of, of the budget and, um, as far as, uh, projects right now, um, I've been working on the planning board on moving forward some zoning changes to bring forth to the selectmen for March. And then become familiar with the town and what its needs are, so we can perhaps apply for some grants, whether it's, uh, um, for, for, uh, you, you know, utility expansions, water sewer line, um, well, not so much sewer, but, uh, or mass works, um, or other, other types of things, also working with the open space and rec commission on, uh, trying to finish updating the uh, open space plan. So there's, there's a lot, lot going on to coordinate right now.
Okay, um, finance committee, any questions?
Yeah, oh, sorry, go ahead, Brian, you go first.
But, no, I was just gonna say welcome aboard, Mark, that's all, so.
Thank you.
Uh, I was just gonna ask, the salary for town planner, um, obviously being a new position, did we do a survey on that, Ari, or how did we come up with that? Is that the general range of planners in this area? Hope you're on, you're on you, Ari.
Sorry about that, generally, yes Darren, we, um, we benchmarked, um, around, there were a number of, 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 of studies being offered as well. We did a benchmark analysis of what others were being paid, found that eighty thousand was around the sweet spot. Um, Mark, due to his experience, um, which is quite extensive, um, he was the town planner for Proxborough for ten years, one of other places. Um, we came in, we brought him in a little bit above, but not, not very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else from finance committee? Um, okay, Lorraine, any questions?
No, I'm, nope, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Rich?
Uh, yeah, Mark, um, one of the things that we, uh, talked about, uh, last night with the board of assessors, and I know Ari's mentioned that he's going to try to pull it together, but looking at the, um, the GIS system and the mapping, you know, updating some of the data layers, uh, I know you haven't gotten involved in yet, yet, but there's at least four or five, they know that need to be done, so I don't know if Ari is going to give you that task, or are you guys just going to work as a group to, to address some of those issues?
Probably a little of both, yeah, yeah. It is on the list.
Cause there's a couple of major ones that need to be done, that would benefit everybody, you know, uh, in all the, in all the departments, so. Uh, I know Ari's gonna try to pull that all together, so that's important. Okay, I guess, you know, I, I guess you mentioned some zoning articles, uh, Mark, and I don't know how many, is there a couple or two or three, or is that still up in the air?
There would probably be three larger ones and then a few housekeeping items. Uh, the three larger ones would be a, uh, revision to the sign bylaw. Uh, the second one would be a revision to the, uh, uh, site plan review bylaw, and the third one would be a new open space and, uh, residential development bylaw, which is like a cluster bylaw. And so those are the three of the significant ones, and there'd probably be about three or four small little housekeeping items.
Okay. Um, you mentioned that you're working with the open space committee, which is great, because I, I, I know that they needed help. And, um, I know Ari told you, and originally, we were talking about trying to put some funding to help Serphead, you know, finish that plan. Um, do you feel confident that you can work with the open space and finish that plan?
I think so, I attended their, their meeting last week and they, they were really pretty much through the first several chapters, um, in trying to fine tune some edits. And, uh, then the next chapter is, uh, they start working on the inventory and analysis of future needs. And so the, uh, I'm gonna coordinate with the parks, uh, commission, I'm already met with the chairman, Joe.
Tasha. Tasha.
Todd, yes, so about doing an evaluation of the town parks, um, and trying to incorporate that into the plan, cause it's open space and recreation, and see what their needs are moving forward, uh, so we can develop, put that into the plan as well, so. Um, so I, I feel confident, perhaps we can use, we may be able to use their assistance in updating some of the maps uh, or drawings that are in the, uh, in the previous plan. Um, and we may be able to just get that done through our regular community assistance that they provide, but I haven't really discussed that with them, cause I wanted to meet with the, the, uh, the committee first and see where they're at. Uh, I think we should be able to get through it without their assistance as far as the writing and, or the rewriting of the plan goes.
Okay. The only reason I bring it up is that, you know, we talked about, Ari talked about it, that, uh, you know, we were looking to provide some funding and right now, unless that changes over the next month, uh, so, uh, we don't have any funding in the budget to do that, but Ari, correct me if I'm wrong, we do have, uh, money in contracted services that we could probably use if we had to?
Yeah, I think if we had to, we, we do, we have some leftover we could use, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. At, at this point, Rich, I've been told that they have it under control, but I, I have, I have, I didn't mention that there's a possibility if it was needed.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, um, let's see, I think we already, uh, Brian said welcome. Darren asked a question, does anyone else from finance committee have a question? Or Mark? Okay, uh, Lorraine?
No, I'm all good, thank you.
I already asked, right? Oh, that's right, I did, okay, I'm sorry. Um, okay, so any final thoughts? Any, you know, thank you, Mark, for being here, um, thanks for being here in Lakeville. Um, and, uh, I'm sure the open space is happy to have your help too, as I know, uh, the planning board, some of the planning board members and the zoning board members are, um, are happy to have some help too, so thanks. Um, okay, so I think we're good with planning. Um, next, I think we're going to fire department, right? Okay, I do see Chief O'Brien's decal there.
Oh.
There he is. Uh, so, uh, of course, you know, we have three of the biggest budgets, you know, left in town, um, so, uh, all right. I guess we're ready, Mike, I don't know if you want to run through the whole thing, if you want to hit the changes, um, it's up to you, however you want to do it.
Well, thank you for, Madam Chair, um, thank you, uh, select board for this opportunity to present my budget. Um, this budget is kind of my first, uh, the first one that I felt confident, I had a decent grasp of the data to, to make some, some, some changes, some adjustments to the, to the, to the various line items. Um, there was a, a lot in, in my budget that, um, there were some, some under, underfunded lines and some overfunded lines. And at the end of the day, I was never really comfortable with the end result and throw COVID and everything else and all the other instability in, of the last few years into the mix. It, managing the budget turned out to be a very difficult thing, and it was only through the support of, uh, of, of, um, Todd and, and, and TA Sky that, that, within the last year, that, that, uh, that I could have been able to do it properly. Um, so, so leading off the major changes, um, you're gonna see a, uh, a, a salary change to the deputy chief's position, which is a little offline with, um, with the rest of the budget, and that's just, um, a reflection of, of what, you know, the market pays for deputy chiefs, especially of her qualifications, and also reflects the, the work that, that she does and, um, and the fact that she's probably the, one of the most dedicated firefighters I've, I've run across. Um, that, that bump is completely funded by the salary side, adjustments to the salary side of the budget. So you'll see, uh, deletions and reductions, and with those deletions and reductions, I was able to, to, to compensate her at a more fair level. Um, the other, the other, uh, item that you'll see that's new to my budget is the creation of a, a captain, a training captain. And again, this is funded by the elimination of a lieutenant's position. Uh, this position would still be operations, it would still be a person that's riding the vehicles, uh, responding to calls, but it would reflect that, that captain would be, uh, taking on, um, the coordination of all the training and another administrative function. So basically, you'll be helping the deputy and I with the, the running of the fire department. Again, this is, this was funded with the elimination of a, of a, a line and the adjustment to some other lines on the salary side. Moving down, uh, as I noted, we, uh, we, we've, uh, eliminated one of the lieutenant's positions, which resulted in, uh, just, uh, just under a twenty-four percent reduction in that line. And going on to the firefighters, we've seen, uh, we see a bump in that line. Um, the, uh, the select board had, uh, had provided me with the, uh, enhanced staffing, uh, last budget year of, uh, an additional two firefighters in response to, to COVID, and the, those two, uh, firefighters, uh, became permanent positions this January. So the budget that you see before you represents the first full year of having those, those eight firefighter positions in the budget, so you do see a bump up there, but there was really no change in structure or program, it was just a reflection of six months added to that, to that, uh, line item. As I go down, you'll see, you'll see various changes and you'll see some negative act, activity, a lot of that is, is just adjustments to the, the, um, the type of staff that we have, uh, we've seen adjustments to educational bonuses and things like that, all the contractual obligations that I have to manage. Um, you'll see various, uh, uh, you know, adjustments there, but there really aren't any new programs or true, true changes to the way the department's being operated or, or staffed. Um, so are there any questions about my salary side, or would you like me to continue on to the expense side?
Um, let's take it by the, let's do the salary first, good idea. Um, does the finance committee have any questions? Um, I know, yeah, I just want to reiterate that the two positions that the chief is talking about there were the ones that were, you know, basically, they, they were emergency positions that we approved, that was, you know, paid for by CARES money, but, um, with the increase in the activity, which is still going on, um, we, we recognize we need those positions, so. Um, but Darren, I'll, I'll, you can go first.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say, I think that was a good overview, chief, thank you, um, and I just want to put on record that the the entire increase of all the salaries is only two point two percent. So I know you, you were going through a lot of numbers and ups and downs, and I just want people to know that, at the end, it's, it's really just a two point two percent increase. Thank you.
I appreciate you pointing that out, um, it's, uh, thank you for those, that comment, um. It's, uh, it's a realistic budget, I, I paid very little attention to that two point two percent. Um, I, I tried to come up with some realistic numbers and, and, and it's, it's, I'm more comfortable with this budget than, than the, the, the three previous budgets for sure. So, um, um, I, I, I don't know, I, I put a lot of effort into, uh, providing you with an accurate bu- a budget and I, and I hope at the end of, uh, end of this year, it proves out or, or plays out the way I want it to.
Okay, Brian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, chief, I just want to say, um, as you know, our family's been, uh, customers of the department the past year a couple of times and everybody that's visited us has been nothing but professional, we love what they do. Uh, you know, the deputy's been there, she's been amazing, we're very lucky to have her in that position. And, uh, you know, the, the, uh, rapid test kit handles this week went great, um, in and out real fast, everybody was very friendly, uh, so thank you for all that, you know, your folks do over the year. Um, quick question, this might just be my ignorance and I apologize, on the organizational chart, I see there's a captain for each on-call group. Are, are those different captains than the, the new training captain you've got here?
Yeah, it's, structurally, this is kind of a quirky thing and it's not something, and, and just to make you feel better, it's something I didn't understand either when I got here. Um, typically qualified fighters don't get a lot of money, uh, and they, they, they do it because of the love of the job and, and, uh, and dedication to the community. And, and I, I theorize, I've never got a straight answer, but my theorize that, that you give somebody an extra bugle, you, you provide them with an extra decoration, it's kind of a, a way of, of maybe compensating for that lack of, uh, compensation and they're, they're and compensating for the, for their dedication to the community. It's kind of an honor, bestowing an honor on them, but it does mess up my, uh, traditional rank structure that you would find in a fire department.
No, that, that's fine, that's fine, I just didn't know if like the two represented what you might consider optimal, like you'd be adding another one next year for house, but sounds like it's just the way titles work right now, that's okay.
It's, if, to be transparent, eventually as the workload, and I don't know what they see here would be, eventually as the, the burden of operating the department continues, um, I could see me or, or a future fire chief coming back and making that captain part of the administrative staff, um, and having a, adding a lieutenant's position, you know, that's, that's kind of the progression of things as a town grows and, and the fire department expands.
Thanks. And, and if I may, one final quick question, you usually share with us the crazy percentage of increases year over year, what, what's this year looked like so far?
Um, I, I'd be shooting from the hip, um, we're averaging, we, I think we had sixteen percent increase, uh, this year, uh, last, this past year, well, look back at three sixty-three and sixty-five days, which, uh, is about six percent over our average. We average, going back ten years, we average about ten percent increase a year, and we hit sixteen, and I, I, um, the bulk load of that, of course, is medical. Um, we had a quiet year for structured fires, and I know I'm not supposed to say quiet, um, because it's bad luck. And, um, but our, our ambulance has really, really kept us busy and, um, we've seen a, a huge, uh, increase in, in ambulance revenue generation as well, that correlates with that, that, uh, that spike in EMS calls, um. We're on pace for another record year this year, uh, actually, we're, we're on pace for another million dollar year for the town. Um, we generated just over a million dollars last year, and, um, we're, we're ahead of where we were last, last year at this time as well.
Wow, that, that's impressive, thank you for holding all together for us.
Thank you.
Um, anyone else from finance committee?
Yeah, I have a question, um, twenty twenty, you had thirteen full-time people, twenty twenty-one thirteen, then last year you added in two for half-year, um, and, and appreciating the, keeping the budget only to two percent, but are you being too conservative and do you, do you really not need anybody additional full-time for twenty twenty-three? Well, um, if you ask a fire chief if they need more people, uh, he's always gonna say yes, and, and, and my response to be, is, is that, um, there, there's, there's a ton of needs in this town and a limited amount of resources. And I have a picture of, in my head of where this department should be, and I want to act incrementally to get there and not, not be, uh, and maintain our, our success rate and our asks. Uh, if I ask for the world in, in one year or, or one budget, um, I'm gonna get laughed out of the room. Um, so, to be completely honest, yeah, we do need manpower, um, we do struggle at times to answer the call load, and we do struggle to, uh, to have enough responders to, to meet the demands of, of the town. Um, but all fire departments struggle and, and I have faith that we will get where we need to be eventually, and it just has to be in a, a sustainable and manageable way.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
One of the things I would note, so I, Mike's, Mike's guys do, or guys do, do this, do, uh, fantastic work. Um, there is a, there is a staffing issue, um, it's mainly, um, you can, as you said, you can always use people, the bosom, I think you'd be, might, might be, might be very happy if you could consistently keep every position filled. And, um, recruitment is a, is a constant issue. Um, it's one of the reasons why we're doing what we're doing on health insurance and looking and trying to head that way to help that out, but I just wanted to sort of point out that correlation, I think Matt, Mike would probably be a very happy man if he could just keep his positions filled or, you know, on an ongoing basis.
Institutional knowledge, I mean, the benefits of public safety by having somebody like Will Purcell, uh, in the department who was there for thirty years, um, just is, it just, it's difficult to put a price tag on it, and if, and every person I lose to another town, I train and invest all this time and money and, and, and they move on, it's such a blow because it's such a, a lost opportunity for, for the performance of the fire department. Uh, and Ari, thank you for bringing that up, it's, it's a great point.
Okay. Um, that was from Adam, right? Uh, okay, Lorraine? Questions?
Yeah, uh, um, not so much a budget, but more, um, procedural, so if we, if captain's position, you know, does, um, get voted in on, at town meeting, um, are we, we're good to go, we just have to vote that position or, um, do whatever we have to do to get it started? So you'd be good to go, right, Mike?
Um, it's not, it's, I have a, it, it wouldn't be good to go, it's a good question, um. I would have to negotiate with the union to, to, um, to make this, uh, a go. I would have to negotiate with the union to, to, um, to make this a, a go. I have a, I have a, basically a gentleman's agreement, uh, if you will, um, with the union that they do support this. And they've been, uh, they've been, uh, engaged in the development of this proposal. So I think it would be more of a procedural thing, but I'm, I am required to, to have union sign off.
Thank you. Okay, Rich?
Yeah, um, the chief is, the chief and his staff, you know, have just done an amazing job over the last two years. It's just unbelievable what they've gone through and I don't, I don't think people realize, you know, the calls and what, what they had to deal with and so forth. But they have done a terrific job. One of the other things I'd like to mention and, and Mike, uh, mentioned the ambulance fees. You know, he took that information and the billing and stuff that there was problems with. And with the help of, uh, Pam, who was the deputy chief, um, they addressed a lot of those problems. The billing is now clean. We get the money back faster and so forth, and that's been a huge, you know, benefit to the fire department and the town.
Okay.
One of the, one of the problems we had almost, I believe the, the number was up around $800,000 and, and bad debt. And receivables out there that, that really wasn't being addressed and that number, we're down below $300,000 today. It's, it's, we're, we're staying on top of that number. When the, I, I think when the, when the town was audited, that was one of the things that they had a problem with. And, and despite handling the receivables, um, since 2018, we've more than doubled our ambulance revenue. We're about $485,000 a year in ambulance revenue, I think in 2018 approximately. I don't have the number in front of me and, and then, and we're, we're, as I said, we're set to be, be over a million dollars this year.
Yeah, I would note that year-to-date, this is as of, um, end of January, the ambulance revenue was over $600,000. And so they've already covered about 72% of their budget and for, for revenue. So we're, we're doing quite well in that category.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I just wanna, um, you know, say that, you know, again, thanks to the chief for his early thinking with COVID. Early on in COVID, in case people don't remember, we helped out at least one of the cities because their crews went down with COVID. You know, so I also know that the chief works, you know, really well with mutual aid, uh, good mutual aid partners. So, um, I, I just think that, you know, we're doing everything really here, going in the right direction. Um, and sometimes when you look at the numbers, I think when I first became a selectman, we approved an, an increase. Correct me if I'm wrong, chief, there hadn't been an increase or something in the ambulance fees for several years. And, you know, so in, I, in what I think is a short time, I think that, you know, and I, I have no doubt that the deputy helps you out with a lot of this stuff. So, um, anyways, uh, thank you for all that.
My, my strong point is, is the, the administration of the billing side, uh, where her strong point is, is the, the document, the documentation side. There's, there's, she's a fabulous, uh, fabulous medic. And so she knows how to document a run report and, and you can't get revenue from a poorly written, uh, run document. So we balance it, that each off very well, for sure.
Yep, um, okay, so where are we going next? The rest of, uh, sorry.
So this is, uh, the expense side is, is I was, I was able to, um, move some money around and, and make some cuts when I, where I could. Again, not cuts for the sake of making cuts, cuts to produce a realistic budget for you and for, for the town. And one of the first things that, that'll pop out of you is a 66, 66.7 increase, percent increase in the repair and maintenance of my vehicles. I have the, the board in the town has been very good to the fire department. We've, we've got a new pickup truck. We've got a new, uh, boat and we have a new fire engine, um, since my arrival. And I'm grateful for all of that. Um, but we do still operate two vehicles that are, um, ready for social security. No, I'm kidding, that was a joke. Um, but they're, they're older vehicles and they're expensive to keep on the road. And so looking back, even beyond this budget, looking back about four or five years, $30,000 is, is, is a tight budget for repair and maintenance. But, um, looking at what we actually spend every year, um, $30,000 is a more comfortable number for me. And, and we'll, we'll be right up against it again. And it should be noted, and I don't usually, I know it's not my place to praise another department heads, pe- person, uh, or people. The mechanics over at the, uh, at Public Works saved me probably double that. They are phenomenal. They keep my vehicles on the road and they have a, a huge impact on, on public safety, uh, doing what they do. They come in on Saturdays to fix things. Um, I can't speak, uh, I can't say, uh, say enough good things about them. So it's $30,000. It's a big jump, but it could be a lot worse if it wasn't for those people. Moving down, uh, we have a reduction in repair and maintenance equipment. We've had some, some good hires, uh, last few years, people that are very good with small engine work. And we've been doing a lot of our own repairs on our, our pumps and our portable pumps and, and, and those small engine items. So that's a, that's been a bene- a benefit. The only other real thing that, that jumps out to me is, is we, we've last year or two, we've kind of, um, overspent our telephone line. You know, the, the line hasn't kept up with the increased cost and that's why that adjustment happened. So, uh, that's pretty much, um, oh, I'm sorry. I think I got a feeling I'm missing something here. I'm sorry. Nope, that's, that's it. Okay. If you have any questions on the, on the expense side?
Anyone from finance? I don't see anyone, right? Okay, um, Lorraine.
Oh, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Rich?
I'll sit, Madam Chair.
All right, um, Ari or Todd, any last words on, on the expense side of the fire budget?
No ma'am, they have a significant capital project, but we'll get to that when we get to their.
Okay, all right, um, so I think that is good, chief. We'll probably see you in a little bit, I guess.
Thank you very much. You, uh, very briefly, emergency management budget status quo, no changes.
Okay. All right. Um, okay, so next on our list is, uh, police department. And I do believe Chief Perkins is right there for us.
Good evening.
Hi. All right, take it away.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, uh, select board and finance committee. If you see what, uh, was presented to you in the packet, um, you'll see my proposed budget. The budget for FY '23 is an overall 6.43% increase. Some of that is contractual obligations and I put in for two enhancements, which, uh, which are the increases. And I'll brief you on, uh, the enhancements. The first one is, uh, overtime. Uh, I've requested an additional $8,000 in overtime. Uh, and you'll see that, uh, that increase is more comparable to what the 2021 actual uh, overtime budget line item, uh, which was spent. So it's just trying to balance, uh, the overtime request to what we actually spend. The second one is, uh, my enhancement request is for an additional police officer. You'll see that that's in the wages patrolman line. Um, and that line goes up by 12% for this enhancement request. And I kind of have to get into, you know, why, why I'm requesting an additional police officer. And it's kind of a history lesson for the, uh, the Lakeville Police Department. I have to go all the way back to 1989 to let you know that our staffing level in 1989 was 18 sworn police officers. Today we have 19 sworn police officers. Uh, one of those police officers is in the school. So we, we're kind of at the same staffing levels as we were in 1989. And you look, if you look around town as far as the population growth, you look around town as far as the construction growth and the increase in traffic, uh, and the increase in calls that we deal with. You'll see that all these increases happened, um, over a number of years. And the, the sworn, the number of sworn police officers has always fluctuated. And we've never really got over that same 1989 number of 18 to 19 police officers. With all the increases in town, call volume, um, traffic, speeding complaints, traffic enforcement has kind of taken a back burner. We, we answer our calls, we investigate the crimes and it doesn't leave a lot of time to enforce, um, chapter 90, speeding tickets. And it's kind of what we're seeing as a big complaint from the citizens. Always calling us, you need to run radar on this street, you need to run radar on that street. And, and we're doing, we're doing that and they go out there, we have, you know, certain targeted areas that we'll go out and, uh, and patrol. One of the other things that you'll see in the documents that you have is that we've got grant money to buy the radar signs and you've probably seen them around town. Uh, we got two additional ones, um, on grant money. So we have a total of six. Two, uh, two more will be deployed probably once all the snow thaws and we can, uh, get those out. Those are just suggestions. They don't really enforce anything. But it does give us, um, information as far as when people are speeding and we could get somebody out there. So if my request is for an additional police officer, that I would use 40 hours a week for traffic enforcement. That would be their job. Um, they would go out there, they would take all the complaints from the citizens, all the requests for radar on their street by their house and they would go and target these areas to, to enforce the traffic laws. They would also be in charge of these radar signs that we have, collecting the data off it and finding out when people are speeding and going out there and targeting during the certain times when people are speeding and, and writing citations.
So what I do now.
Just wait until they.
The, um, lost my train of thought with that one. The, the, uh, traffic enforcement officer will also be trained in commercial motor vehicle enforcement. And that's a num- another complaint that we always get is the increased number of commercial motor vehicles, tractor trailers, driving down certain streets. The typical police officer that we have right now, when they go to the academy, they get zero commercial motor vehicle enforcement training. Uh, this police officer will be trained up in commercial motor vehicle enforcement. And that's not just like, oh, yeah, they can, if there's a truck that's speeding, but it's more than that. It's seeing, uh, stopping the trucks, doing safety inspections, making sure that they're safe to be traveling down, uh, the roadways of Lakeville. And a lot of them will come through Lakeville that, uh, don't have inspection stickers, would fail a safety inspection. And the normal police officer isn't trained, um, to spot those, uh, safety violations. So that's, that's my plan and that's, you know, the plan is, yeah, it's a need. But it's also a want from the citizens of Lakeville who keep calling, wanting more radar, wanting more, um, traffic enforcement. And I think a dedicated 40-hour, uh, a week police officer dedicated to tra- traffic enforcement will address that, uh, that need of the, uh, of the townspeople. And those are my two enhancement requests for the salary side. Any questions on the salary side of my budget?
Anyone from finance first?
Okay. I just have a quick question. Do you think adding this person will kind of stabilize the overtime budget?
That's always been, you know, something like you can see, like when we're, when we're short-staffed, overtime will go up. This, this position wouldn't, because it's just dedicated. They, they had, they're not supplementing, like I'll have a certain number of patrols out every shift. When it gets down below, um, and hits minimum manning, I won't fill it and it won't cost overtime. So if this person takes a vacation day, um, the traffic enforcement also, I don't fill that shift with overtime. So the only thing that this position would do is to supplement and work overtime. So it wouldn't really, uh, save overtime because it's not a dedicated, it's an extra patrol, um, that's gonna be out there. So it wouldn't supplement, um, another, another patrol, if that makes sense. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't save on overtime.
Thank you.
But it wouldn't cost overtime either because if this, if this police officer is on vacation for a week, you don't have to backfill.
Correct.
Brian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Chief, good to see you here tonight.
Good to see you too.
Couple of quick questions, if I may. Is that traffic enforcement officer, is that a, a, a role that's utilized in other communities that you've seen work well?
Yes.
And, and if Lakeville becomes known as, you know, don't speed there, they'll get you. And, you know, offenses kind of go down. Could this person also fill in another areas if need be?
Oh, correct, yeah. Um, so Lakeville, you know, we had this reputation as don't speed in Lakeville, you know, Tiki Tony's gonna get you. But Tony Amaral has since retired and people, people know, know that. And we're kind of losing that reputation. So that reputation was so good for the town, Lakeville, it was good for public safety. People would come in town, he, you know, if people know coming down 79, just cutting through town that, hey, Lakeville, they're always out here running radar, they're gonna slow down. And, you know, it's a certain police officer, you gotta find the right police officer put in this position who's gonna build that reputation. And, uh, you know, it's, it's something good, you know, for the town to have that reputation. You speed in Lakeville, you're gonna get written up, but don't let the traffic enforcement officer get you, you know, and they'll have different spots. Oh, they sit here or they sit there. Um, so it's a, it's, it's a good thing to have it and a good reputation to have.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Larry?
Hey, Chief, good to see you again.
Good to see you too, Larry.
I, uh, I noticed it with the traffic enforcement, which is a great idea, well, except for me. Everybody else is fine. Um, you, you have a zero on the increase for, uh, court overtime. Having a traffic enforcement officer, won't that increase more court, uh, time for, whether it be the police prosecutor or, or even the, the, uh, the, uh, traffic enforcement officer?
Yeah, it's possible. We do our hearings. So when we do, unless it's a judge appeal or something. So if someone goes to a hearing and they get a ticket and then they can appeal the ticket to a judge, that's when the officer who wrote the ticket gets summons to court. The traffic enforcement officer, their normal schedule, even though it'll fluctuate, like, uh, I believe the, the officer would be able to work certain hours or change their schedule, but it would be mainly dedicated to daytime commute. So if they were summoned to court, they would go on duty. It wouldn't cost any more money for court overtime. And court overtime, if, if you look, um, at my request, it's always been okay, the, the actuals. Like you have to go back a few years to see, you know, what the actuals were spent for court overtime. Uh, the last couple of years has been down due to COVID. Court's been shut down. We haven't been getting summons, but that's gonna come back. And if it comes back even more, I'm, I would probably just have to run a deficit. Because all the cases that we have in court, they have to be tried at some point. A lot of them were dismissed, uh, uh, due to COVID. But, uh, you know, some minor stuff. But, uh, you know, those cases are still on and we'll have to go to court for them. So, uh, it would be a deficit, but, um, that, that, that number's good for me for next year.
Okay, thank you for your input.
Okay, um, anything, Darren or Adam? No? Okay. Um, Lorraine?
I'm all set. Thank you, Matt.
Okay, um, Rich?
I just want to say, the chief and, uh, he's done an excellent job, uh, recruiting, you know, good police officers. We've had some retirements over the last, you know, few years and, uh, he's able to attract, you know, these officers because of the town and his reputation. So that's important and, um, he's done a good job in that area. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much.
All right, um, Ari, anything from you on, uh, that new position or anything else? Okay, Todd, no? Okay. All right, so do we wanna, can we now go over the expenses?
Sure. So my, the, uh, the expense side of the budget is increased by, uh, just $2,000, $2,070 to be exact. The first one is um, in my professional contracted services. We resigned with a custo- uh, custodial contract that price went up a little bit. That increase reflects part of that, that increase reflects part of an increase in our public relations that we signed on with, um, last year. And then the other increase was, um, to the internet cable. to the internet cable. Cable prices went up a little bit and I just, you know, we put in another, what is it, $70 into that line item? Just so it wouldn't deficit and we could pay that cable bill. And that's, that's it for, for my expense side.
Okay. I probably shouldn't catch you off guard, but do you know how much, maybe Todd has the answer, we do spend in gasoline and I know gas has been more expensive, but we don't know what it's going to be next year, but I know that, you know, that was the 50,000. So I'm, I'm assuming that's enough.
So that's been, that's been a number for quite a few years, 50,000 for gasoline. And some years it's been close to that 50,000 and it all is dependent on what the current gas price is. And we use a lot of gas. That's our job. We go out, we drive around, we burn gas. Right now it could probably get you.
Got it. I got it, Chief. So through January, seven, seven months, 26,648. So they're running at 53%. So just, just under budget, but pretty close.
And, and that's not bad actually because the price has been up. So, you know. Okay. Okay. Does anyone else have any questions on any of the expense side of the budget? I did have one more question, but I'll wait for the finance committee.
Yeah, I have a question more than a comment on the budget. Budget's pretty straightforward on expenses. In, is it with the gasoline and the, the push to per electric and, and that, is that something you, I mean, that's $50,000 is a lot of money on gas, one.
Yeah. So where, I've been, Jim Kenny from the green communities or the energy. I've been talking to him and he's, he gives me some information on the new, so Ford's coming out with, or they did come out with hybrid car. And the state police are testing them right now. So the state police do have some hybrids. And next year I'm, I'm looking to at least possibly get one with the two, just so we could test it out. And I'll, I'll see what, you know, what other police departments are saying about them. Whether they're safe, this, you know, they're, they're, they're rated for a police car. So we'll have to wait and see, but they, they did come out with them and they're just being tested right now. So that is in the back of our mind to do that and to do hybrid. And we've been, we've been buying car, the cruises that we buy right now are like eco-friendly or fuel efficient. And that's just part, part of the policies and we are looking in, in the future for next year. And that'll be part of the capital tonight, tonight too, is that we talk about, I'm looking to get two cars. And I'll be thinking of at least trying one hybrid. But the price is more money. I want to say it's like for both cars, it could be like five to $7,000 a car more. So depending on what the price is too, but I, I think we could probably swing it.
Right. In the long run, with not having to spend so much on gas, it might be worth it. And then, and then the environmental factors on top of that. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, did you want to say something? No? Okay, sorry. Anyone else from finance committee? So I know Chief, that you did say, you know, the contracted services, whatever, but so now that the building is two, two years old, right? Officially been in use for two, almost three years now?
Yes, it's, it's three years. Yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, a lot of the stuff that were warranty items, maybe under guarantee or whatever have, you know, fallen off. So are we still at that good spot where, you know, everything's still new, not requiring, you know, a lot of whatever, just if you can give us an update on the building, I guess.
The building's good. We, I mean, we had an issue in the storm. We sustained a little bit of damage with the, the last storm. Snow got up under the, the ridge vent and it got snow in the attic, which leaked into my office. So I'm missing a couple of ceiling tiles. But it's something that I think can be, can be squared away, but nothing major. Everything's, everything's holding up.
We had the recent, we had the recent, we had the recent water heater issue. Don't forget that.
Oh, that's, yeah, that was, that was kind of it. With a water heater, for some reason, just when it was outside of warranty, it was just over a year. It, it, it had a catastrophic failure, it exploded. We had no water, hot water and we didn't know why. And then it blew the whole cover off the water heater. And we had to get a new one. And that's what we're working on right now is a new water heater.
It was pricey.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess that's, you know, it's like, you know, the building's either new or old. So you know, it's all out of warranty. But it's almost like you're in that transition right now on what might still be in warranty or not. But, you know, I was just curious, it just sounds like unfortunately routine stuff that happens, you know, everywhere. But, yeah, it's, it's a great building and I know you take very good care of it. Everyone does actually. So. Okay. Lorraine, any questions for the chief on the expenses?
Nope. All set. Thank you.
Rich?
Yeah, Madam Chair. A Chief, about a year or so ago, you know, we, you upgraded some software and I know that you have to replace it again. And that one of the key things is, is to try to make sure that the fire department and the police department are utilizing the same software for dispatch and so forth. Is that still in the process or is that?
That project is still going on. It's a transition with our CAD RMS service. Going from Paymat to a company called Mark Forty-Three. They're actually custom designing our system. We were supposed to be up and running. October was their date. Now they're saying hopefully it's going to be in June. They had to build out some, some booking modules and stuff like that, but it's the same. So there's a few other towns in Massachusetts that are going to this. Boston PD's up and running on theirs right now. And hopefully will be up and running in June, but they, they are working with the fire department to make sure that it's compatible with their CAD RMS service. So when we put a call in for them, all the information goes over to them and they'll have that same information.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Ari, any final words on that? We can, the capital. Okay, after. All right. So the communications budget, that's all been taken care of. So I think that's it. We'll see you in a little bit.
All right. Thank you.
For capital. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So we have cemetery commission next. I thought we saw Ken Upham somewhere. Did we lose Ken?
Comes there.
Yep. Thank you.
Oh, there he is. I'm sorry, Ken. I didn't see you. So if you want to just give us a brief overview of the cemetery budget, that would be great.
Yes. So going back, thank you very much this evening and I'm happy to see you all. I like to be there personally because I love to do my talk and show stuff, but can't be there. So let's go back. I think I'd just like to give a lot of kudos right this time to Todd, who helped us not just recently, but many times during the year. As you know, Thompson Hill Cemetery was made in nineteen, 1711. That's a, that's the oldest cemetery we have. And what we're trying to do is bring back the original post and rails of that cemetery. They get on the national registry. And I think we discussed this previously numerous times. So looking at it, we need fifty-three posts and rails to make that an accomplishment. But we also know the budget is going to be something that we have to consider, which we have. We had a meeting yesterday with the cemetery commission. And in that meeting, we decided to go ahead and purchase five additional posts and rails. We have two already waiting at the Southeast Fence Company to be installed, which we purchased with Todd's assistance, which I thank him very much for. And so that would give us enough posts and rails to now encompass the barrier between Precinct Cemetery and Thompson Hill. And if you go up there, you'll see that it is quite remarkable because it really is like it used to be on that one side of the cemetery. So this five additional posts and rails will go to the first entrance of Thompson Hill. But we still have fifty-three more to go. So we're not going to ask you for that because that's going to be probably $80,000. So I don't think we want to talk about that right now. So because of this and wanted to get back into trying to get that to original position that we'd like to have it back to, we need to increase our budget this year from 13,000, which has, has been for the last eighteen years, I think, to 15,000 just for this one year. To take in consideration, want to buy these additional five posts and rails with the installation fee, which will be included in that. Other than that, we're fine. I mean, we're doing great. Our, our commission is really on top of everything. I really thank Joe Morton. I thank Emory Laurel because they've been really an asset to us. Any questions whatsoever?
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Upham?
And Madam Chair, what page are we on? Because I see commission, the cemetery commission on. Sorry, I just had it. It's with parking, it's with parks, not parks. Sorry. It's with the highway department. Oh, here it is on page fifty-five.
Yep.
I see the budget proposed to be 13,000.
Yeah.
Can you mention, you mentioned fifteen thousand?
I think that's, that's something that Ari and I will, will fold into the revised version. That would be part of the original request. To you. It wasn't in the original budget, but we'll make sure, you know, if the board supports that, we'll make sure it's included.
Okay.
For the next iteration. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Larry?
Quick question. So you said 15,000, that total, was that 15,000 on top of the 13,000?
I'm just requesting 2,000 over our regular budget of 13,000, so 2,000 more.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Brian?
You, Madam Chair. Back at the finance committee meeting before the town meeting on November eighth for a reserve fund transfer of $6,500 that says was for granite posts for Thompson Hill Cemetery. It said it was needed to complete this ongoing project. So that, that wasn't the last of the posts we needed. There's a whole lot more, it sounds like.
No, no, it's about the same time. I think it was about 65,000, we said at that time.
6,500 at that time.
Oh, cannot be. It was, it has to be close to that 65,000 framework because we're talking about each post is $450. They're going back to the 1800s timeframe. And to be registered on a national registry, you can have posts dated today. It has to be in that same framework of that cemetery. That cemetery is 1711. We can't get posts for that year naturally, but we get close to it and that will be the 1800 period, which we can buy, but they're limited. So when Todd helped me with the last ones, now again to a point that I'm hoping, I mean, if we could have the money to do it all at one time, that would be great because then we would have everything done. And it would be within a timeframe that we want, but we, let's face it, I don't think that Tom wants to at this point spend $65,000. Not for our posts and rails. Now, just as an added point to that, someone may ask, why is, oh, not why is, but what are we going to do with the present plastic posts and rails that are there now? We're going to move them to the left side of Precinct Cemetery and close that area off. Because the neighbors there are really concerned about people coming there and throwing excess flowers that are dead, pots and pans and so on and so forth. And so we're going to reutilize that to make a barrier on that left side of Precinct Cemetery. So we're going to reuse that and not just throw it away.
So I guess my question to expand on that is why don't we create a capital project to get this done? If the 6,500 wasn't enough, because it sounds like if we have to purchase things from a certain timeframe, over time, those are going to become fewer and fewer and more and more expensive.
Absolutely. Now, the other thing I'd like you to consider, we have in our, well, I, I didn't call today for that. I don't have the answer for it, but our perpetual care fund that we have now that's controlled by, of course, all you all. That perpetual care fund, I think it might be close to 80,000. I don't know. But if you wanted to do that and consider that, we have the authority to use that perpetual care fund to completely do that cemetery.
Todd, is that what do you, can you tell? I don't want to rush you.
These are, these are good challenges. Yeah, Ken's right. It's, it's just under $80,000. So we can, we can certainly take a look at that internally. There's a portion of the perpetual care that is permanent, if you will. And it's really the earnings on that that are available to be expended, but we can, we can work with Ken on that. You know, if there's an interest in, you know, packaging up a project or, you know, looking at this, you know, more timely, we can certainly do that.
Okay. Ari? Was that me that lit up or someone else? Sorry. So, I mean, this isn't something we have to decide tonight or even for this budget cycle, correct? I mean, we could.
I mean, these were not, these are not identified as needs during the budget process. So, you know, we could certainly try. If the board wants us to, we can certainly look away so to, 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 I think we probably need a little more visibility on what we're talking about here.
Yeah. Okay. And I mean, you know, I, I understand a little bit about what the perpetual care fund is, but, you know, like Todd said, whatever. So, I mean, you know, that if we have a fall town meeting or whatever, maybe, you know, this could be something that we could look at then. But just knowing that, you know, that it's a possibility or we could choose something. You know, I'm glad to have the information. So you know, if the finance committee wants to stay in touch with that information too, through Ari, that would be, you know, that would be, that would be good. Yep. Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions on on the cemetery portion of the budget? I don't see any. Lorraine, you okay?
Oh, I do. I do have a quick question.
Sorry.
Ken, have you made any plans to, to move forward to automate your, your file management system that you have? Because that might be something that we could include, you know, in the budget, maybe, maybe not this year, but start to plan and have the discussions for next year. Because I know it's a manual process for you folks right now. So have you been discussing moving toward an automated system?
Could you clarify that for me? I don't know what you mean by automated. You mean, is my ability to go onto cemeteries and see them in a computer framework?
I'm sure that there's a software program that would be able, that would enable that to happen, but also have more electronic so that everything is, is not paper.
Yeah, Lorraine, we've had that for the last five years.
Okay. And other software upgrades and anything like that, that would be?
Yes, we have a company would be dealing with the last five years. And we are on that particular program. And it does show us the three cemeteries that we are now have open. There's Clark Cemetery, there's Precinct Cemetery, there's the Veteran Cemetery. And so all those are on computer. So the cemetery commissioners have access to that.
Okay. And are you finding that it's, it's benefiting and working for you?
It is working. It does because what happens on these programs that we have, if someone calls us, an example, I got to call, I get at least ten, twenty, probably more per month on people requesting information. And so we are able to take that information we have and download it to the individual that would like that information. But first, before we do that, we verify who we are talking to. Because this is proprietary because we don't want to give information about, as an example, what the cause of death was. In some situations, this is not really something we want to give to any individualist asking for information regarding a grave plot. What we do is we just kind of keep it a little nebulous, I guess, and give them the information and looking for, as an example. and give them the information and look for, as an example, so where is my dad buried? And so we show them the plot number. We show them a deed and so on and so forth in that regard. We keep it very minimal until we know exactly who we're giving this information to. And in my background as a retired federal agent, I know that some of these issues can be really, really problematic to the town. So we're careful about that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Rich?
I'll say it now, Chair.
Okay. Just because you're here, Ken, it's our one time a year. We currently, as much as most of us don't like to discuss this, do have available plots in Lakeville. And, you know, I know at one point plots were getting low, but I do know that, you know, there's available plots. And if people have questions or you know, want to pre-buy, I guess they reach out to the cemetery commission. Is that the way that's handled or?
Yes, and in that note, that lady called me today and she said, I'd like to have a plot in the Lakeville cemeteries. And I said, where we like to go? And she says, well, I don't know. What do you have available? And I said, well, we have a thousand two hundred lots.
Okay.
So we're not going to be around because we sell an average between ten and twenty a year. So Thompson Hill, as an example, that's close to us. But the Veteran Cemetery is open. That's a hundred thirty-three plus there. We still have eighty-four open. As far as Prieston Cemetery is concerned, we have two hundred and sixty-four. As far as Clark Cemetery is concerned, we probably have two hundred. As far as Stroberg Cemetery is concerned, we have seven hundred and ninety.
Okay. All right. So if folks really want some information, they can get ahold of the cemetery commission and work directly with you, right?
Absolutely. That's how it normally works. What happens is Tracy has been an asset to us because someone calls, has given to Tracy. Tracy tells them to give me a call and then we handle it from there. And then I let Tracy, Tracy know that we did discuss this with the individual that was calling.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Ari, any final? Oh, I'm sorry, Ken.
No, my pleasure. Thank you.
Okay. Any final words? Are we good? Yes?
Yes, ma'am. We're fine.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ken. Thank you so much for everything you do. Again, not something most of us like to talk about, but absolutely necessary. All right. So moving to Department of Public Works, right?
Yep, page fifty-two.
Page fifty-two. Let me see here. Is that Frank on the phone?
No, I'm here.
Wait. Oh, there you are. Okay, sorry. I'm sorry. All right. Hi, Frank.
Hi, how's it going?
It's going okay. So I don't know how you want to take it, if you want to just do salaries first and then we can work on the rest. We can do it that way.
Sounds good. So first off, thank you to Christina for all her work with the mission statement and the department description and those things that we worked together on. And obviously, of course, a big thank you to Todd. It's really worked out well these last couple of years where he takes the time to sit with me multiple times to go over a lot of this, especially with the transfer station revenues and coming up with the numbers that that we can be comfortable with it and it makes a big difference and definitely takes away a lot of anxiety and things like that from the process. So I definitely appreciate it. So as far as the highway department goes, the salaries, obviously, you see a lot of just the contractual obligations and the cost of living increases. And then we do have one enhancement, which is one increased another laborer, which what we did is we took a small amount of money, which was one seasonal laborer, which is a full-time seasonal, took that away and added to my hourly wages. Truck driver operator, which covers all the employees, basically added a laborer to that line item. That being said, the, the numbers are a bit deceiving. It shows me having an increase of staff, one a year for the last couple of years, which, which is correct, but one of those employees went directly into the park system. Another one of those employees was replaced because we took a gentleman named Don Adams, who's a welder fabricator mechanic, took him off the road as an HMO and put him in the garage with Billy. That being said, because obviously there's been a big increase in both working on fire police, the increase in equipment on, on our end. So it was definitely needed. Plus, no mechanic should be working by themselves in a garage for safety reasons, especially working on the type of equipment we work on. But anyway, so so that's my big ask really, with this budget is, is just to increase the staff by one laborer. Other than that, there really is no changes on the salary side of things. I mean, just expenses, expenses are very straightforward. Everything stayed level this year. It's really tough to gauge. We usually try to make some changes. But because of staffing issues and because of COVID and having to keep guys separated, we weren't doing the same amount of projects and, and the same type of projects, I guess you could say that we typically would. So we were comfortable with just keeping everything level going into the expenses.
Okay. Does, we'll take the finance committee first. Does anyone have questions from finance? I don't see anyone. Okay, Lorraine?
Oh, nope. No, I'm set. Thank you.
Okay, Rich? I think Rich said he was all set, right? Sorry.
I was muted. I'll say it, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Ari, any, any final comments on this or, you know? Okay, thanks. Yeah, I don't, I, I'm pretty sure you heard Chief O'Brien compliment your, your department with all their assistance. So at, at keeping the, you know, emergency vehicles going. So, you know, much appreciation for that work. And also for, you know, we've had, really, we've had a big storm in October. I couldn't believe how quickly, you know, everything was cleaned up. Then we've had snow and, and really just, I, I know I went by the day before the snow of the big storm too, what, a couple of weeks ago before the rainstorm? And, you know, everyone, they're like, hey, this is our job, but that doesn't mean that it's not still difficult to be away from home for thirty-six to forty-eight hours at a time. So, you know, please extend my thanks to every, everyone there for for always doing, going above and beyond. And you know what? I actually got at least two text messages saying, hey, the roads look great. So you know, for two people to actually say something positive means a lot. You know, most people just come, comment when it's negative. So anyways. Okay, so Ari, you want to help me here? Where are we going next?
You'd want to go to the transfer station, the info on the press on page seventy.
Okay, so let's go to the transfer station. Thank you.
Again, on the salaries, everything related to salaries is just contractual and, and cost of living. There were no, no enhancements or, or anything being requested there. Moving into expenses, it's, it's a lot of the same. The only thing that did go up was our municipal solid waste. Sitting down and going over the numbers, we've seen that it's kind of steadily been increasing. The municipal solid waste being our bagged garbage that we dispose of. So we did move that number up a bit. And then also the bag prices have gone up a bit. So that's why you see that line item. Just go up to two point nine percent. But other than that, all the rest of the expenses stay level. We try to keep the transfer station pretty modest, I guess you can say. It gets a lot of support from the DPW also, so.
Okay. Questions from anybody on the transfer station? Okay. All right. I think that's it then, right?
There is the revenues, but I don't know that for the transfer station.
Do we want to do that? I honestly?
I can just say that with the revenue, that's where Todd really much for me with that. We go over the numbers from last year and then where we're at this year. This year, we're actually on a really good track, but that just changes so quickly. Just kind of the way the business is of recyclables and things like that. But so that's, that's the basis on where these numbers came from is just using last year's numbers and then where we were, where we were at this year when we started going through the numbers.
Okay. Any questions? Anybody? Right. All right. Thank you, Frank. Okay. How do we want to do this capital improvement plan, Ari?
Well, Madam Chair, if it's all right with you, I'd like to first go over a couple of scheduling items.
Okay.
To, so first, I want to make clear to everybody, we don't need votes tonight. We don't need final decisions on anything tonight. There's still a lot in the air when it comes to the budget process. I've had conversations with, with you, Madam Chair, as well as Chairman Beals regarding the, some future dates that we could come back. Variables that exist, for example, include this, the state budget. I feel more comfortable basically budget on at least the House Ways and Means budget, if not the House budget, so that we can have a little more certainty in terms of numbers. I think there's some up, potential upsides there in local aid especially. The schools need to get farther along in their process and we had to have a better idea of what's happening, especially with the regional district, but also Old Colony. Old Colony presents their budget tomorrow night, which I'll be attending and I believe that Larry will be going to as well. So there's, there's more data that comes when I'm trying to say. What I'd like to do or suggest that we do is that we, is that we plan on reconvening with the joint meeting on March seventh, which is when the select board has the next scheduled meeting and plan, and plan on having, having a discussion then. I will be giving a budget update at next Monday's board meeting, but that's going to be very brief. I'm mainly going to say this is what happened with Old Colony. Because there won't be really much news at that point. I don't think, I don't think House Ways and Means will be out yet. So there are several things that we can do in the meantime that I've spoken with Todd about going forward and helping the, the board and the finance committee, you know, get some context and information on what's happening. First of all, we have a couple of revisions to the budget. We've already talked about a few of those tonight. They're fairly small. It could be larger ones to revenue, depending on what happens with the estate. And it also has to do some changes with schools based on what's happening there. So we'll need to account for all of that. So we're probably going to give you basically a whole new set of sheets. Just, just the financials in, with the March meeting, for the March meeting. In addition, if the, if the board desired and the finance committee desired, we can, after we talk about the CIP for a little bit, and if there's any kind of guidance or initial direction, we can make some changes there. We could even put together a financial model to show debt service impact in the out years. That is something that's missing from this document. We don't have a five-year plan as far as debt service goes. We, we have it ourselves. We just don't have it in the document. And we could easily turn that around for, for you to look at. I think that'll be useful information. So those are all, I guess my only, my, my, the bottom line is, I'm trying to say is that tonight, I think, is a good night to ask for information and get some perspective on these different projects. Maybe weigh in a little bit on, on what you feel is feasible and isn't feasible, that kind of thing. Just give some occasion. But I, I don't know unless someone feels very strongly, there's a need for hard decisions tonight on, on any of this other than, you know, just maybe some initial direction. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll leave it to you.
Okay, so I just want to remind everyone too that we do have, you know, another committee, the Capital Improvement Committee.
Yes, that too. Yeah.
Yeah, that will also, you know, meet
Yeah.
at some point to go over even, you know what, to make sort of some recommendations to review everything. We went several years without having that committee in place and I'm happy to say that we've had that in place now for at least a couple of years. So good to be.
Thanks for reminding me, Madam Chair. That's, we have a meeting, that committee is set, tend to lead a meeting on March eighth. So we, we have a date set for that. So even on the seventh, we won't have the responses from the capital expenditures committee, but that's okay. We'll have some more information on, on timing and things like that. And if we have to come back on the twenty-first one more time, we certainly are willing to do that.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Yep. Let me just write that down. Okay, so just for clarity, we have, just for clarification, we have a select board meeting Monday night. And then our next meeting after that is March seventh. So, okay, so I
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I, I would like to clarify something having to do with the revenues in the park department. If everybody can go to page sixty-eight in their book, which is the expenses, to clarify that the current revenue coming in from Boston Tavern, one of the things that that agreement does for us is that if you look at line fifty-three zero zero zero, Management Services for Loom Pond Lodge of thirty-six thousand six hundred dollars. They are no, they are not charging us any management services fee for their, their current agreement. So which means that if you look at the, if the budget, then the expense budget has gone down by thirty-six thousand six hundred, which helps in the the revenue side of the, the budget itself. The other thing that's in that agreement is that they will pay costs of electricity, heating and trash removal as well. So when you're looking at the total picture, you know, we're actually ahead of the game, you know, as far as the revenues and as far as the expenses are concerned. So I just wanted to clarify that so people know that we no longer have that thirty-six thousand dollar expense.
Okay, so that was, I'm guessing in response to last night when we were talking about whether we were looking at their revenue thus far, right?
Right.
Okay. All right. So, okay.
So I mean, I mean, just an example, if you look at the expense column in two thousand and twenty, it was ninety-nine thousand seven sixty-four. And the expense column in twenty-three is sixty-eight thousand dollars, which the primary of the reduction has to do with that management fee is no longer charged.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Does anyone have any questions on that? Okay. All right. So do we want to take the capital items by? I mean, some of them are, well, I shouldn't say pretty self-explanatory, but I guess
Excuse me, Leah?
Yep.
Could, could I just offer one clarification before we really get rolling here?
Sure.
You may recall Monday evening when I, when I did the overview, I mentioned that there are a couple of things on this five-year plan that when we issue the second iteration will change. And I just wanted to remind people before we dug in.
Okay.
And it, the first line regarding preliminary design and ultimate construction for whatever the town decides with respect to the town hall and fire station. You'll see a million eight there. Where, as I said the other night, we're looking to move a substantial portion of that to FY twenty-four. We should have exact numbers for you, but for conversation, it's probably going to look something like five hundred thousand in FY twenty-three next year, and then the balance, a million three in FY twenty-four, leading toward construction in twenty-five. So that's
Todd, I'm sorry. I would also note for the board and finance committee that we're, that the earliest we're looking at going to town meeting on that would be fall of twenty-three. That'd be the earliest. And honestly, that, that, that's probably somewhat optimistic, but maybe, but hopefully realistic. Of course, require a good amount of work. Of course, require a good amount of work and a part of the community over the summer.
Thank you, um, and then the other item, uh, we mentioned, uh, back on Monday night is on the second. Page under Public Works, um, you'll see the fight in year two FY 24. The $500,000 placeholder for the DPW facility. That we're looking to move up to, uh, next year to, to undertake it, the, this upcoming town meeting. And by the March meeting, you know, we hope to have some preliminary cost estimates, um, there is. Um, work underway right now around the design for that, so. Um, that's running at a faster track than the town hall fire station, so we'd like to, to move those around to. Take care of the DPW facility as soon as we can, um, otherwise, um. You know, pretty much what you have in front of you is, is a good starting point, but we're just going to be for sure making those changes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ma'am.
Madam Chair, excuse me.
Okay, who was first, I thought, Lorraine, was that you?
Me.
Oh, Tracy, oh my God, okay, Tracy, thanks.
I just had a question for Ari, Ari, when you say town meeting in fall of 23, are you talking about the year 2023 or fiscal year 23?
Fall 22.
22, yeah.
Fall 22.
22, okay, thank you.
Um, Madam Chair.
Yep.
Ari, I, I know we've mentioned this to the board, that we were fortunate enough in, uh, to get a, uh, MSBA, uh, project approved. And then we're going to get 50% reimbursement. I, I don't think Ari, and you, you can make a suggestion here, that that probably is not going to be done in, uh, 2023. Maybe approved in the fall, like you said, as a possibility, but. We don't have an exact number on that project, it could be $2 million and we get 50%, you know, reimbursement, which made it cost us a million dollars. But Ari, do you want to explain where we are in that process or everybody knows, thank you.
Um, so, uh, we were invited to participate, which is what the purpose of the, um, action that was taken at Fall Town Meeting was about. Um, that was the information that the, um, regional district needed to submit the application. So it actually hasn't closed, it haven't officially been approved yet. Um, the, my understanding is that the approval is supposed to be coming, uh, the next month. And, um, at which time, after which time, MSBA typically assigns a, um, OPM and an architect, they just assign somebody on their, 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 their bullpen of people. Of, of, of firms and, uh, and then that process will get underway. Uh, the design will probably take good solid six months or so, so I think the earliest we'd be talking about. Being, being able to even go to town meeting, by the time it got approved, will probably, it will be next spring. Not this spring, but next spring, so you'd be talking about earliest would be spring, uh, spring town meeting that would get going. And, um, if we have to do something every time, we, we, well, FY 24, get going and, uh, the, um. Uh, we don't have the exact numbers yet, we don't have the, the, uh, the, the, the budget yet either. So, uh, there's still a great deal of uncertainty on that one, Rich is correct, it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of a million, and if we do provide you, when we provide you with a, uh, a projection on debt service, we'll certainly make sure that's taken into account.
Yes, so, uh, Todd and through Ari, I, I would imagine that we want to update the 24 number to include a million dollars for the window project, I would think.
And we, we certainly can, we did put a footnote on, on the plan you have.
Oh, yeah.
It was on page, uh, 75.
It is, yeah.
You're right.
It is noted.
But that's fine, Rich, you, you're right, that's not fully transparent, we really weren't sure what to put there because we.
I know.
Not much certainty, but, but I put placeholders elsewhere, so perhaps we should have put a placeholder for there too.
At least we know, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so, uh, we are anticipating the change there under select board for, um. The finance committee, um, is everyone's knows that we're doing all this feasibility study and everything, right? Yes, okay, alright, um, so, um, according to Todd, we'll make that change, any other questions on that? On, uh, select board? Okay, um, so facilities, we have library roof replacement, I, I mean, that's looking to be what, FY 25, so I can move along. Um, I believe Chief Perkins is with us, I think most of this looks like, uh, what we talked about before. Um, perhaps the hybrids, but you know, every year, just to make sure the fleet doesn't ever, isn't all old at one time, there's replacements that are, that are done, correct, chief?
Correct, um, our fleet consists of, uh, 14 cruises, um, we have, uh, nine marked. Four unmarked and one partially marked, um, for a total of 14. Um, in the past, we've gone, you know, um, one cruiser a year, two cruises a year, three cruises a year. And when we do those, um, it, we get, you know, a bunch with, okay, now they're all old at once, like you, uh, like you were saying. So the, um, five-year plan that I have is, uh, two cruises per year. So what that would do is we would replace the fleet in five years, um, and then an unmarked, uh, here and there, maybe every four, four to five years as needed. Um, and that seems to be the best plan to have, uh, a safe, uh, fleet of police cruisers for the offices.
Okay, and then of course, if something gets into an accident or repairs, whatever, it's just like regular folks, we have insurance and everything else, right?
Correct.
Okay, um, anyone questions on the police portion of the, um, capital plan? Okay, Darren, I did really appreciate, uh, I didn't even think of it actually, you know, the whole hybrid concept and everything, so. Um, I didn't even know that that was, you know, actively being tested out by the, by the state police, so I, I appreciate that information tonight. Um, from both of you.
Okay, Madam Chair, hey, um, Ari, or Todd, um, it might be a good idea that maybe people don't realize. That if you go over to the right-hand side, you say fiscal 23, the green line means borrowing. The white line means free cash, I'm explaining it here, the retainer earnings means, uh, you know, coming from retained earnings, so. That's how, right now, and yet to be finalized, is determined how these projects are going to be funded, did you want to go explain that further, Ari also?
Oh, it's color-coded on the right, um, on page 75, we have the color coding with the, with the, the category, so I, I thought that was self-explanatory, but, but you're, you're correct, Rich.
Yeah, okay, though the one's not quoted as free cash. Okay, uh, so, um. Next, uh, we have fire and emergency, I think, uh, Chief O'Brien is still with us. So, um, an ambulance is scheduled for FY 25. Um, there is a ladder truck in here for, um, FY 2023. We have a utility terrain vehicle, uh, which would come from free cash for this year also, and, or wait, am I skipping a line?
Command vehicle.
Oh, command vehicle, I'm sorry, um, and then the utility vehicle would be for next year, engine replacement, uh, way out in FY 26, so. Um, Chief, do you want to give us a breakdown here?
Sure, um, I'll start with the, the command vehicle, uh, since it's the smaller one and, uh. Probably the easiest one to cover, I, I'm driving a 2016, uh, utility vehicle, somewhat, it's a, it's the same vehicle as a police department, uh. SUV interceptor, it currently has, uh, just under 70,000 miles on it. Um, I would like to replace a, our squad three, which is a, um. It's a Ford Taurus that, uh, that's up there in age, it's not, uh, really functioning very, very well anymore. Um, and I would rotate my car down, and what I'm looking for is, I'm looking for a, um, a, a four-wheel drive pickup truck. Um, basically, a, a pickup truck's more suitable for the town of Lakeville, our, our fire roads, our, our laneways, uh, I've been stuck a couple of times already trying to get into the woods. To, to get to a fire, um, I have an all-wheel drive vehicle, but it's just not, it, it's not the same as having a four-wheel drive vehicle. Uh, a pickup truck, I'm pict, I'm envisioning a, a cap, uh, over the back in an organizing tray in the back. Uh, where I can basically have command boards, some additional, uh, radio heads, which means I can, I can run a scene or manage a, a major incident or even a small incident. I'll have everything organized in front of me, I can run accountability, which is tracking our people. Um, I'll have like almost a little, a little command area where, uh, neighboring chiefs can come in and help me manage a scene. Uh, it's, it's, it's designed for, it's designed for, for, it's like a little incident command post, basically. Um, the beauty of a, of a truck is that it's going to have a, a great life, a long lifespan for the town of Lakeville. So say, you know, five, six, seven, eight years down the road, it's time for me to, to, um, to get another command vehicle. That, that, that vehicle, if I get a vehicle that's sturdy enough to be repurposed as a brush truck, it could be repurposed to, to do, to the Department of, uh, to, uh, Public Works. And, uh, it basically, it allows the town to get kind of more bang for the buck. Um, uh, and so it's just a, it's just a, it's a better designed vehicle. And it's, uh, it'll provide the town with much more value for, for, for many, many years versus what I'm operating right now, so any questions about that?
Um, for me, I don't see anybody, okay.
So. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So my, my next ask is, uh, uh, basically, we're operating a 1992 Simon duplex LTI. So, this is our ladder truck, it's a tower ladder truck, which means it has a bucket on the end of it. Um. I've never heard of a Simon duplex until I got to Lakeville, so I have a, a, I have, um, 1992 is actually the year I got into the fire service. So I'm operating a ladder truck that's old and very rare, and which is a bad combination for when it breaks down. Uh, this past year, we lost the transmission on this vehicle and we had to have one custom-built, which, uh. Left the vehicle out of service for, I think, almost five months of the year. Uh, during that time, we had an automatic aid agreement with the town of Middleborough. Uh, a ladder truck is an indispensable tool, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a piece of apparatus that, um, when you need it, you really need it. Um, if there's somebody hanging out of, uh, a window at, uh, an apartment building or, or, um. Or that we have a large fire at one of our industrial properties in the industrial park, um, there's just no replacing this tool. Uh, so, the alternative of, of not having this tool in service is to call a neighboring town and, and hope that, that their vehicle is, is available to me. Um, the Lakeville Fire Department has a history of, uh, their ladder truck history started in 1990. Uh, we've, we've bought, uh, we bought our first ladder truck, it was a 55 Max MS. Uh, so we bought a 45-year-old truck back in 1990. We bought another truck, another Maxim, it was 76, it was a 76 Max and we bought that in 2001. So we've owned four ladder trucks in the history of the department, uh, and, and that's since 1990. Uh, so we're averaging about seven years of service out of each ladder truck. Every one of those ladder trucks was purchased used, um, we're getting the, the, the tail end of, of the, the service life of these vehicles. Which means we're getting the bulk of the repair costs that, that come with the operation of those vehicles and the, 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 the bulk of the downtime, they had a service time from those vehicles. Uh, the current one was purchased in 2017 for $70,000. Uh, we've spent, uh, just about, just under $35,000 over the last three years, excuse me, four years keeping it on the road. Um, so it's a, it, it's a challenge, it's a, I, it's a, it's a necessary tool. But it's very challenging keeping this specific vehicle on the road for sure, uh, due to its age and do its, uh, its rareness, it's, it's not a common vehicle. The company that built it is out of service.
Okay.
So what I would like, or what I'm proposing, is, is, um, requesting 1.4 million dollars, which is a, I, I am aware that it's considerable sum of money. Um, the, the ladder truck that I envisioned is going to be smaller, considerably smaller, there's models out there that are. Two feet shorter than sit over a foot lower than our existing ladder truck, the, the, there's models out there that have the buckets in the back of the vehicle. Which protect them from vehicle traffic, if, if you pull out of the station, right today with our current ladder truck and, and if a semi truck comes down. Bedford Street, it'll, it'll sheer off the front of our, our bucket, um, if, if it gets too far out on the road in front of the cab, and we have to get out into the road. Uh, to see up the, up the, uh, up the street for safety, so it's a, it's a, it's kind of precarious with that, that design. Um, the, the next ladder truck, if, if we're successful, is going to be able to travel into the neighborhoods of, you know, uh, Clark Shores and. And, uh, and the smaller neighborhoods, the old, uh, the old lakefront communities, because, uh, I'm, I'm preferring a smaller truck. Um, smaller, more maneuverable truck that'll get down these lane, laneways, the current truck can't do that, their current truck is, is a large vehicle. Um, the next truck would have a fire pump on it and it would have many of the capabilities that a fire engine would. Uh, it'll carry attack lines, it'll carry its own water, it'll have a fire pump on it. Uh, so that gives me more flexibility, if, if a lot of trucks are out, on, on the street and it's called a house fire, it's first arriving first. Um, it'll be able to initiate a fire attack, not only will, will they be able to throw their ladder, but we can pull lines off and, and start to suppress the fire. Um, a lot of trucks should be almost like a Swiss Army knife, it should be, uh, the, the jack of all trades, um, and, and, and that's what I'm looking for. I know it's, it's kind of premature, but I've already started doing my homework and, and where what's out there, we've got vehicles that are, are, are six inches more narrow than, than the, the, the existing vehicle, which. In our current building is, is, is a, you know, is significant, but, but please don't think that I'm buying a ladder truck for the, for our current building, I'm, I'm buying a ladder truck that can navigate. The roads of Lakeville, which can be very narrow and, and, uh, difficult to, uh, difficult to navigate, so.
Okay.
That's where it stands.
Okay, um, so, this is a big ticket item, it's shaded in green, which means it would be, uh, potential borrowing. Does anyone have any general questions from the finance committee, Darren?
Yeah, I have a few, uh, Chiefs, thank you, uh, so, have you done an analysis, I assume for 1.4 million, you're getting a, a brand new truck, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, have you done the analysis versus a, a newer used model, it sounds like we've always done used and they've lasted a certain amount of time, not ideal. But have you looked at what a used version of what you're looking for would cost?
Well, it depends, it depends on, on how old we find it, the, the, the biggest challenge is to find. Um, a used vehicle that's suitable for what, for our building, for our streets, there's so many variables. Um, you can find, uh, you can find used vehicles for a hundred thousand dollars or $400,000, if you get on the, um. On, on the websites for the, for the manufacturers and, and, and what you're getting is, is trade-ins. Um, I find that fire chiefs very rarely trade in a, a reliable fire truck, uh, so it's, uh, it's very difficult for me to. Uh, it, the, the prices are all over the map to answer your question, um, but there's so many variables involved there, it's, it's very difficult for me to. To predict what we would pay for used fire apparatus that would be acceptable.
Okay, and assuming we replace the current one, which sounds like we have to do it one way or the other, is there any salvage value left at all since it's an antique? I mean, is, would we get anything from the salvage or is it just a?
I.
Rust bucket or?
To be honest, that we've, we've been, we've been, uh, we've got a, they have failed to provide me with a, with an estimate of what they would give in trade. Um, I, I, I would have to investigate that really to see if we'd make out better in, 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 in auction or, or sale or, or, or trading it in.
Thank you.
Um, anyone else from Brian?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, Chief, on, uh. I think you've already answered one question I had, which was, would it fit in the building we have today, um, which it sounds like it would from what you're researching. Um, would a smaller truck still have adequate reach, not only for, you know, the smaller areas, but. Kensington Court, the new distribution center, other planned projects in town, do you have any concerns there, it'd still be adequate?
Thank you for that question, um, so, Wareham just put a, a ladder truck in service this year that, that is. Um, about two and a half feet shorter than our current vehicle, the, the base of the ladder is mounted towards the front of the vehicle. And the ladder itself is 15 feet longer than, than our ladder is currently, so it's closer to the front of the vehicle, we generally nose into scenes. Especially with our staffing, because we don't have the people to get off and back the ladder truck into a scene, uh, so we lose the whole length of the truck. Uh, reaching out over our own vehicle, but with the turntable mounted in the front of the vehicle. Um, we make all that up, we point into the scene, we don't have to do any backing, and we have 15 feet more reach, uh, we, and plus the additional. The additional length that we, we, we recognize from, from the mounting in the front of the vehicle.
Okay.
So it's, it's better capability.
Impressive geometry, um, second question if I may, what? I know it's hard to answer, given, depends on how much use there is, but what kind of lifespan would you be looking at such a piece of apparatus and? You know, what kind of warranty terms are out there, can you get longer ones or?
Mm-hmm, yeah, but you get. Um, it's, it's all what you're willing to pay for, uh, you know, there's a cost for those warranties, um, the lifespan of a vehicle. Um, the lifespan of a vehicle like that, a brand-new vehicle in Lakeville would be thirty to thirty-five years. And I came from a department that has operated two ladder trucks since nineteen seventy. They bought new both times. Um, the second ladder truck's still in service and still going strong. Um, they bought their first one in nineteen seventy and I was fortunate enough to be able to operate it when, beginning of my career. Um, so there's no, they're, they, they were a busy department. So I've, I have, um, I have no doubt that we would be able to get thirty to thirty-five years out of a ladder truck.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, that's, that's interrupt the process, but one thing I don't think you mentioned, Mike, and if I did, I apologize. But um, in terms of the procurement process, um, you mentioned to me the, sort of the, the time lag right now and, and getting these, these are custom-built machines and the amount of time it takes to put them together. Um, I think, you know, about two years, is that what you said?
Currently with the, the supply chain issues, it's, it's, it's taking over a year to get in the ambulance. So, I think, uh, I'm hearing two years for, for a ladder truck and I think that's being generous.
So we wouldn't anticipate that debt service would kick in until around FY twenty-five or so. Um, and so the, so that, the, the only reason I'm saying that is just for the purposes of, this, this, um, this, uh, debt service projection we're going to provide to you is going to show that, you know, that's the dynamic it'll show.
Okay. Um, Lorraine, do you have any questions? No? Okay. Rich?
I know, I'm all set. Like, you know, as Ari says, he's going to put together the projections. I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. Madam Chair, sorry, I have one more thing. So,
Okay.
Uh, if we're saying we won't, we won't need the financing until for two years, give or take, is there a down payment that you'd have to pay upfront for them to start building it? And with interest rates, as low as they have been and seem to be headed up in the next couple of years, does it make sense to get the finance? I mean, I, you'd have to do the math on interest, but would it make sense to actually get the financing sooner than the two years?
So, so Darren, I've got, for, for my prior gig, I've got fair amount of experience procuring fire apparatus. I procured about six of them in New Bedford. So, um, the, and, and I don't know what this is going to change because of the time lag. What I can tell you is that conventionally, when you buy a fire truck, you sign a note, um, and you lock in the financing, but that financing doesn't kick in. Uh, the rate doesn't float. It's locked. But that, but, but that doesn't, but your, but your, your amortization doesn't kick in until after delivery. So, um, if it's, now, I don't know. I, I can't tell you, I can guarantee you that, that a financing company with a two-year lag is going to be willing to do that. But this, but my experience, I have experienced with it, where we're with a one-year lag or one and a half year lag, they have been. So, um, in those cases, you know, the first payment would be due, um, usually net sixty days after delivery.
An interest, interest doesn't accrue well?
No.
Well, okay. That's, that's good to know.
You start, you start the note from delivery. Um, New Bedford, we, um, we tended to do, um, eight or nine-year terms, depending on the type of apparatus. And, um, that, that, the, 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 the amortization period would kick in, you know, on delivery on that date. So, you know, whatever financing company you're using, and there's one that we used, um, uh, it's a company called All-American that we used a lot in New Bedford. Um, that, 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 that would, we would sign a master lease with, lease with, and we'd put together lease purchase. They would front the money and, um, and then, you know, for, for where it was required, down payment for delivery, which is a small number. And then the company would, you know, whoever was producing it would put together the, uh, the, the apparatus and we'd pay. And they would transfer the payment, then we'd pay the financing company.
Okay. Very helpful. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Um, so, anybody else, um, have any other questions on that? Um, you know, uh, just going off of what, uh, Darren just said, I mean, you know, maybe we can see a little bit more information. Um, you know, it is a big purchase, so I just want to make sure we all know, you know, what it means for, for us. Um.
If anybody would like to see, um, firsthand what, what a new, uh, tower ladder looks like and how it operates, um, I've had offers from, uh, from other fire chiefs to, to host field trips as well, if you would like that.
I'm always willing to go on a field trip. Um, okay. So I think that's it for fire, correct?
That's it. Yep.
Okay. Um.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I, I just want, want to point out, uh, the chief just said, you know, we ordered a new ambulance last year and I think, we're just about to get it any day now, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere in there.
I, I wish you would. I know it's. Back to April.
Oh, God, here we go. But, but, but the good news is, is that the, um, one ambulance is, is, is being, has been paid for this year. And so the money's available to borrow for this new ambulance, would be available, uh, already available in twenty-three's budget. And then, I think we said a four-year life or a five-year life, chief, on the ambulance room?
Yep. We get four, we wrote new ambulance every four years.
Right. So, the monies that's here, are the, the new one that's two thousand and twenty-six. Um, the other one would be paid off and then we start a new borrowing for that. So this is kind of, I don't want to say it's a wash, but at least it's, you know, already in, the plan and in the budget going forward. Right? Right, Ari?
Sorry. That's, yeah, I'm sorry, Rich. That's a very good point. If you look at the, um, probably a good time to refer to this. If you look at the debt service section on page sixty-four, you'll see, um, hold on. You'll see about, yeah, near the bottom of the, uh, retirement of debt, you'll see the, the debt pay down on the, uh, on the, on the ambulance, a hundred thousand dollars for MS twenty-two, four, not, and that's, that's not, that is not, that is not excluded debts. That's in, within the levy. Um, so I, I think it's a very good example of something that's paying off, does leave a little room, not a lot, at least a little room. Um, you know, going forward.
And actually, just to follow up on that too, Ari, the, uh, the pumper truck, you know, as you can see, there's a hundred and ten, a hundred and ten, a hundred and ten. And, you know, the same, you know, same situation. I don't know what he had, I thought he had one in his budget here somewhere. Um, but that's the kind of scheduling, you know, that, you know, Ari and Todd are trying to do, to balance it out so that we don't have these hockey pucks, these bigs and ups and downs and so forth to try to, you know, level that stuff off. So anyway.
Yeah. In, in this business, Rich is absolutely right. In this business, you always want to try to smooth your debt, your debt service as much as possible.
Okay. Um, all right. Thank you, um, for that. Um, all right, Frank, are we ready? There he is. You guys bounce around. Does that happen on everyone's screen?
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Good night.
Okay. Thanks, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Uh, all right. So, um, it doesn't really look like there's anything, uh, that's not needed in the TPW, but if you want to just run through it, just give us a little brief overview.
Yeah, for this year, twenty twenty-three. Um, as I do every year, I'm, I'm requesting roadway improvement money. Um, something to try to get ahead of the road, uh, as we all know, especially after this last storm. We see what the conditions of a lot of these roads are and the ones that we're losing, we're going to, once they get to the point they're at, we're going to lose them pretty quick. Um, the chapter ninety money just doesn't cut it. To put it into perspective, if we use only chapter ninety money, and I pave a road this year, I probably won't be back to pave that road for, anywhere thirty-five years from now, I'd say, give or take. Um, that's if I'm doing, you know, using strictly chapter ninety money. Obviously, that, that's not something that can be done. That's why you see, um, a lot of issues on the roads, because there really hasn't been a whole lot of money put into them. Um, so that's the basics there. Three seventy-five is the number I'm looking for. That, that'll basically give me about, two and a quarter miles of road for a basic process, mill and overlay. Um, that, that's the rate. That's including all, all the incidentals that go with it. Um, second item's a tow behind air compressor with the equipment related to it. The tow behind air compressor we're running right now is a nineteen eighty. Um, I think it's about time we replace it. My guys can only keep things running for so long. Um, it's, it's a very versatile piece of equipment that's used for a lot of different things. Um, and we've definitely got our money's worth on that one. Uh, the third piece of equipment we're requesting is a front-end loader with equipment. Um, it would be a, CAT nine thirty M that, that we'd be looking to purchase, um, with a plow and, and, um, a road package on it. Considering, um, you know, it, it's something that we use in all storms, whether it's snow and ice or hurricanes or windstorms or, it's, it, it's, uh, used for a lot of different, um, things, but the one we currently have now is a nineteen eighty-four. Um, so as we know, that's pushing, you know, it, it's definitely well over its lifespan. And that's the items I have for this year.
Okay. Um, questions from anybody? I, uh, yep, Brian?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Dirk Domeni's, um, great job with the recent storms, by the way. If I didn't mention it earlier, I was really impressed how quick things got cleaned up. Um, the three seventy-five for roadway improvements, I hear you're right. That's what, two and a half-ish miles for the process usually is?
Yep.
Do you have a, the road? Do you have like a, your top few roads you're looking to hit during the year? And like, is that going to cover it or are you going to have to make some choices?
Well, what we have planned this year, I have a few roads off the top of my head. It's like PSAV is a big one. Um, that's almost going to, that would basically cover that road, um, for the most part. PSAV and then there's a Church Street extension off it. We probably do. Um, that with the details, the work we'd have to put in for the sides of the road, new posts, some drainage stuff, that, that would cover just that one road project this year. Uh, we have other road projects we'd like to do this year using chapter ninety money, that we'll get in July. And then obviously we have some remainder of, uh, chapter ninety money. But I got a long list of roads, um, that need to be addressed pretty quickly. And then there's a lot of roads actually that, that are on my list, but they're pretty far down the list, even though they're in really bad shape. And unfortunately, it's in a lot of, um, you know, subdivisions, cul-de-sac areas, where unfortunately they're a low priority because they see such a low amount of traffic and they see low speed traffic. Um, but there's no way you have again to those until we get all the arterios and, and the mains done.
Is there a number that would help you more? I mean, if you got, only going to get one project done with this or, I know this is an increase over last year, which is good.
Yeah, no, this is a good number. Um, it, it's, it's a reasonable number. It gives me an extra, um, a couple of miles of road accompanied with my chapter ninety money. Um, plus I only know, I, I don't know how much road work I can possibly get done in a year. As far as project-wise, you know, it gets.
By the way.
Times.
If I, if I could chime in on that too, if you don't mind, Brian, um, the, um, so, you know, the, the town does a pretty good commitment to roadwork for a town this size. In, in my mind, the bigger problem is chapter ninety. Um, I've been in Massachusetts government for nearly ten years now and chapter ninety's been two hundred million statewide every year. Uh, other than one year when, uh, the governor came into office and they gave a little, little bonus. Um, there's a, um, uh, there's a big push on the part of the MMA and others to try to raise that, um, especially now when the state has some cash. Um, but I understand that the administration went forward with another two hundred million dollar authorization. So, unless the, um, legislature manages to get some, some more out of that, you know, that's kind of where we are. But it, it's, it's falling behind inflation or it's fallen behind inflation. Even ten years ago, two hundred million wasn't enough. And, you know, it's just, it's just become worse.
I, I know things are kind of stuck at the federal level, but had the infrastructure bills made any progress? Was there some hope there?
So there is some more money coming to, um, through the tip program and others. Um, Serped told me the, uh, last week that the number had, um, their annual number had increased by about five million over the next several years. Um, which is, sounds like a lot, but isn't that much. We think something like the Route seventy-nine project. Um, you know, there, there's, I, I had a conversation with Serped earlier this week about Route seventy-nine, which is, you know, which is really been hit, been hit bad, but hard by this winter. Um, and we're going to be throwing money into patching that, or we are throwing money into patching that, which is honestly throwing good money after bad. It's, it's a road that needs to be, we all know it's a road that needs to be reconstituted. So, um, the, um, uh, right now, that, that program, which is our next big tip program, isn't scheduled till FY twenty-five, which means fall of twenty-four. And FY twenty-five by federal calendar. So it's like October, September. Um, so fall twenty-four and, um, so that, that is, you know, clearly too long. The, um, the design work is along far enough that it, you know, could, if the money was there, it could be advanced by a year. But, you know, I've been told by Serp, but they got to find other projects moving out. Uh, they said there's a chance of that and they're going, and they're looking into it, but they gave me, gave me no commitment. So we're trying.
Nice. All right. Good to hear. Appreciate it.
I also had one other, uh, on my list for this year. I just didn't have it on my list because I had got moved over, but the DPW facility improvement, we had the five hundred thousand as a placeholder on that right now.
Yeah. So we're, yeah. So let, let me, since, since we, Todd mentioned it earlier, but let me tell everybody where that stands. Um, so, you know, we, we, with that one, as well as with the feasibility study in the town hall, we have, we've hired an OPM, each of those two different companies to do, um, to do work on those projects. The, um, the, the DPW building was considerably less complicated from a design standpoint. We basically know what we wanted to do. And they just had to design it. Um, so the schematic design is well along, um, whereby March, by the March seventh meeting, I had a conversation with the OPM today. They'll be able to give us a budget estimate. Um, and, uh, we, we can, you know, provide some information on it then. Um, we could probably provide if, if the board was so interested in the France Committee, um, a look at the schematic design right now, just to see what it looked, just so you can see what the look, what it looks like. Um, it's fairly basic at this point, but it does give some good information. And, uh, the, um, but there's, we're doing everything we can to push for that for the Springtown meeting. Um, for a lot of reasons, you know, DPW deserves an actual home. Um, the, the, uh, the modulars, you know, had all sorts of issues, as you know, leak, leaking mold and so forth, had to move to trailers. We have these trailers that were, you know, that, that are just temporary solution and, and, um, carrying costs of their own. So it, it just, it just makes sense to get this thing moving as fast as possible. So, um, so we're, we're doing everything we can to get it going. The, uh, the placeholder for twenty-four was frankly, at the time, um, it looked like the project was going to take a little while to, to come up and develop, but I, I think it's, I think fair to say, Frank, is we go even faster than we probably, really hope to expect. So it, so we, we want to take advantage of that.
Thankfully.
Yeah, thankfully. Yeah. Frank's very anxious to get it, to like, actually get into a home.
I, I think, I think everyone at the DPW is anxious for a, a nice place they can call home there, that work.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Uh, any questions from anybody on the DPW stuff?
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I should know one other thing. So that project, as some of you will may recall, there was already some appropriation made for that project in prior years. It's about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, the feasibility study, so I don't feasibility, the design work is costing about, twenty-five thousand or so for this, for this, for this phase of the OPM. So that's takes off that a little bit. So you're like two hundred, two hundred and ten thousand dollars left. Um, the, um, the project will probably cost significantly more than that. Uh, we're not sure how much yet. Um, it won't cost five hundred thousand more than that. I'm pretty certain of that, but we wanted to be conservative and put a placeholder in there. Uh, so whatever the number, whatever the delta is, that's what we're going to be coming back to you to, to talk about for twenty-three.
Okay. Everyone on the finance committee, okay with that? Yeah. Okay. All right. Um, can we move on then? Solid waste transfer station, twenty-five thousand, which is retained earnings, right?
Yep. That's just a basic crack seal and seal coating of the parking lots. It, it hasn't been, nothing's really been done to the parking lots, other than the DPW doing some patching in there. And it's just, uh, some basic lot maintenance to extend the life of that, that area.
Okay. Uh, any other questions for our DPW director?
Madam Chair.
Yep.
Um, I know Frank, that, uh, you've been trying to, uh, repair and paint the barn of the transfer station. So, hopefully that'll get done this year.
Yeah, yeah. We've been, uh, kind of pecking away at it a little.
I know you have.
Yeah. 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 Working closely with Nate and, uh, we, we've been kind of spreading it all around. We've been doing some improvements at the DPW and at the transfer station as time allows and money allows.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay. Thanks. All right. So I think, uh, we're good. Um, so next we have Ari, the addition to the senior center. That's, um,
So we can talk about that a little bit. Um, the intention is that, that's, that's an addition to the, to the building. Um, Nate, you're, are you still on Nate?
Yep.
See, I see him there. There he is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still here.
Okay. Yeah.
I almost ran off for a coffee.
Take a little nap. Yeah, I know.
All of Clarinda's candy, I can tell you that.
Anyway, um, I, the, um, um, Nate was something about this project, which is why I want to make sure he was on as well. uh, Nate was something about this project, which is why I want to make sure he was on as well. The, um, the the intention for that project is to fund it with, uh, grant money and or developer contributions, which could or could not occur. Um, initially starting, um, the, uh, COA wants to do the feasibility study, get a sense of what what the design would look like, and that's what the forty thousand is for. Um, the feasibility study, um, would be funded by COA funding, they they have cash to be able to pay for that. Um, and then, um, there's some additional cash as well to help with the design. So the the, I'm going beyond that, we're getting into placeholder territory. And, um, the, uh, and I I I, it wouldn't be, we can talk about it at the time, but it wouldn't be my recommendation to 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 pursue this project with it with a borrowing. Um, unless we had, um, you know, significant amount of grant money to to pay the cost, not all of it.
Okay, does anyone have questions on that? I don't, Brian?
Quick question, I might have missed it, I apologize. Is there a specific use for that addition or just more general square footage to use as necessary?
A little bit of office space, because there's some office issues with, um, uh, veterans in there and and so on. And then, um, but mostly, uh, mostly program space.
Okay.
Um, Madam Chair, just to follow Brian's pressure, Brian, believe it or not, the building is almost twenty years old. It's hard to believe. It is an excellent, excellent condition. Um, but the building was built in such a way, infrastructure wise, that you could just add this addition on and you wouldn't have to add things like bathrooms and and so forth and so on, which is a significant savings to just putting the addition on. So I think that that's important, you know, because, uh, I don't want to say it can be done easily, but it was designed that way and developed that way with plans showing, you know, where the addition was going to go and so forth.
Yeah, thank you, Rich.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, all right. I think we're good, right? So we're going to move on to, I think, Joe Kosha, we're going to parks, right? Um, uh, okay, so we, Ari, do you want to take this? Because I'm not all familiar with, um, all this.
I'll do my best. Um, the first is the repairs to John Pond Park building, um, that's a building that's a significant, um, structural decay. Um, this money would, um, and Joe, feel free to chime in at any point here, because I'm sure I'll be wrong at some point. Um, this, um, this building, um, uh, would, this funding would allow, would demolish the the section on the rear and stabilize the rest. Um, the, uh, there's no specific use identified, I don't believe, Joe, though perhaps you could chime in on that.
Yeah, right now, I mean, we we can't use it right now because it's, you know, I'd say almost condemned. Uh, but it was for storage, some of the equipment we have there, uh, netting, fencing, things like that, as well as we also looked at, um, using it for the off-season, um, softball players to do some drills in their, their pitching practice, batting practice, fielding practice prior to, prior to the season, even for like fall ball. But so if we, um, modified or revised the building, fixed the roof and all that, so it's habitable, uh, that's what I anticipated, anticipated, um, actions out for that building, using it for storage as well as maybe some revenue generating for having teams who want to rent some space to do some drills in the off-season. So that was, that was the idea for that. Like you said, the back part of the building has to come off, it's falling apart, it shifted off the foundation, it's it's, it just isn't, it's just awful, it has to go. Uh, and Nate assessed it, I think he agrees, uh, with that assessment.
You want to weigh in, Nate?
Yeah, sure. So, um, you know, Joe's absolutely right, uh, the foundation shifting, it's all concrete block, the masonry joints are are split open, open, uh, offsets probably a couple inches. Um, you know, from being flush, so and that's a, that's an area, the the rear portion's like fifteen feet by thirty-six. Um, that, that bare minimum, that's going to come off. Um, and then, you know, I I gave two different options, the the full teardown, um, would be around fifty thousand or to tear down a portion of it and rebuild what was remaining was going to be around a hundred. I broke down the ele, you know, I gave, um, allowances for electrical upgrades, uh, plumbing upgrades, contingency and, um, miscellaneous, uh, rot on, uh, trim siding and whatnot. But, um, the one thing, uh, that Joe mentioned, I just want to provide a little clarification on is, you know, the the use of the building, um, has been somewhat identified. Uh, but but it hasn't met the criteria for, um, accessibility, uh, like we're dealing with right now at the, um, historic library. In order to use that as public space at this point, um, you you should provide, uh, some level of accessibility. So, um, elevation change there is probably sixty, sixty-four inches. So, uh, that directly correlates into, uh, lineal footage of ramp. So that's, you know, sixty, sixty-four feet of ramp, uh, to get up in there and make it accessible, or you'd have to do a lift. So, you know, that's a cost not figured, like you, you actually explained it quite well, Leah, where, you know, if we ripping off a portion and stabilizing the rest, right? Um, it doesn't necessarily mean it it should be used for public space. Um, you know, it might make sense, um, you know, to Joe's point where, you know, if they were looking for something like that, um, tear it down, it might be just, just as well off tearing it down, um, in coming up. I mean, Franklin has been very successful with those pre-manufactured buildings, um, where, you know, maybe if it was forty-five, fifty thousand dollars to tear down, um, you know, we might go a year or two and you buy a building that's narrower but longer, that might actually be able to be used for batting practice or fielding practice or something like that. Um, this is the conversation, I I figured it might make sense to throw out there.
Okay, um, as long as we're talking about this building, I guess my one question is, um, if we're talking about tearing it down so easily, I'm assuming there's no historic value to this, to this building, so the historic folks haven't identified it as, you know, historic.
No, it's not on, it's not on the register, there, I wish I, I wish Nancy would weigh in. There there is some story about the centerpiece in the, um, the, uh, yeah, it it's almost, I think it's, um, is it, I think it's like a merry-go-round. So I think there was a, right, I think there was a merry-go-round in there and the portion of it is still up in the ceiling. So they may want to take that out of there prior to demo. Uh, but really, I I think Joe mentioned it, this places you can fall through the floor, I mean, you can look right out the roof right now and and whatnot. But it's not on the register to to that end and 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 we certainly could take it down, probably if we took out a couple of maybe, uh, things like that.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
Yeah, sorry, question, uh, pardon my ignorance, but, um, to tear the building down is fifty thousand dollars, like, how does that happen? For like, it seems like you get a bulldozer, you knock it down and you take it away, right? So I'm ignorant, but.
No, you know, you're not, and, uh, not at all. And 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 so the the reason, we, so we lucked out, um, uh, it, the bidding environment's volatile right now, you know, the people, people aren't looking for work, they got all kinds of work, that is, construction's crazy. So, so folks that are are bidding on jobs like this are bidding high and they're like, well, you know, we'll, we'll jam it in somehow if we can get this amount of money. Um, we really lucked out at the the haunted house demo. Um, I threw a fifty thousand dollar number on it, I thought it was going to be thirty and I built in a little bit for, uh, asbestos abatement. Um, it's required now, I mean, it's been required for a while, but we make sure we follow that, is we do an asbestos survey prior to demo, prior to bidding it, in fact. Um, if a building like this and it meets that timeframe, if it's, uh, asbestos containing building material in the roofing, um, in the, um, in the drywall that's in the, that's in the basement, um, in the masonry, um, you you you'd be over fifty, so.
The abatement, is that what it is?
Yeah, the abatement, uh, the survey itself for a building like that's right around two thousand. Um, so just to do the asbestos survey, testing, uh, building materials and whatnot, it's around two thousand dollars. If you found it in in, um, substantial quantities, uh, the abatement could be thirty, forty grand by itself. So we, you know, it's kind of just like, uh, you know, if you hit a few things that we have to abate, uh, the the fifty thousand dollar number, um, will be sufficient. But hopefully there's no asbestos and it's a, you know, twenty-five thousand dollar tear down.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Um, I see Brian, I think, yes?
Yeah, sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I mean, for this building that is, it sounds like even if we throw a hundred thousand dollars at it, it remains essentially storage if it doesn't meet accessibility needs. Has there been any kind of surveys done to some of the leagues that use the park to say like, you know, what are things we could be doing better here? And then investigate just getting rid of it and starting over and seeing if it makes sense to to put a little more money and then have something that's, you know, fits whatever needs we're not currently meeting? Instead of a hundred thousand dollars to fix storage?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I, I'll answer that, yeah, I mean, um, I I spoke to some people, some of the softball leagues, um, they would like an an area where they could practice in the off-season. Uh, pitching, hitting, you know, uh, um, fielding inside would be nice prior to the season. That's why I figured if we could do that building, we could have it in there, maybe charged, you know, get some revenue from that, um, charging different leagues if they want to use it. Uh, again, i- it is a six foot roughly, um, uh, height to get into that building. So it it's not accessible for anybody with any handicaps, without adults. Um, but the the in the basement there, like I said, it's got some issues, but that's where the well is down as well. So we'd have to, we're going to tear it down, we're going to do something to save the well pump because we use the water there. Um, for the the rest of the facility, so. Uh, Wilbur, any ideas? I mean, if you want to, you know, they're going to tear it down, put another building up lower, maybe that's something we can look at.
Um. But your your idea of the off-season training is great, people are always looking for things like that, especially if you can turn around and rent it out. I I apologize for not knowing the entire facility well myself, what the other buildings do, but, you know, if you can consolidate and have a a nicer new one and rent it out and have those, you know, capabilities of, you know, sounds great as as one idea. I just don't know what that would cost compared to fixing what we have.
It's, Brian, if I, I just jump in real quick, um, you know, the the functionality of the building that's there, it's it's approximately thirty-six by thirty-six. Um, so if you're thirty-six feet by thirty-six feet, I mean, you start, got to start gauging, you know, what you can do in that space. I'm not sure what it, what the distance is from a pitching mound to a, to a, to a home plate or, you know, if you needed fielding, uh, practice. I mean, you'd probably feel like a bullet was shot at you if you were only thirty-six feet away. Um, but you know, you you do have some of these, uh.
Sorry.
Getting late, so so, you know, you get some of these pre-manufactured buildings and I I I want to say Franklin got a couple for like thirty grand. They they were huge, um, you know, so if you did find something that was, uh, you know, sixty, seventy feet long by twenty feet wide, you might have a really nice usable space that you could use in the shoulder months, it would be a bear to heat in the winter, but you certainly could use it in the shoulder months. Uh, you know, to get out of the weather, perhaps, if the, if the, if the parks wanted to go that route.
Just be, it's about forty feet to the pitching mound, so we'd be a shortened distance, we wouldn't be able to use all forty feet, obviously. But there are drills you can do in a short distance, that was the thought, yeah.
Um, okay, I'm just gonna, like we, like Ari said earlier, we don't have to decide on, you know, this stuff tonight, but, uh, you know, lots of good information there. Um, for a decision to be made soon. Um, but we also have, uh, Joe, so replace Clear Pond Park shed.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, can I ask about the building for a second?
I'm sorry, Rich, oh, I'm sorry.
You didn't ask Lorraine either, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, so the question that I have is, is that it definitely would have to be handicap accessible, okay, no question about it. And I think if that had to be done, that could cost another forty thousand dollars if I'm not mistaken, hey? And the second thing is that there's no bathrooms in there, okay? So that's, that's another issue. And, um, I would say, if if it was me, I would tear down the building and do something like Nate, Nate says, because the condition of the building is so bad. You know, if you go inside the building, and my kids used to play there thirty-five years ago, and it's still the same, hasn't changed, you know, at all. And so, you know, it it's leaking, the floor's caving in and all kinds of stuff. So I I think that if we consider doing something like this, that we need to come up with different options and different costs. Uh, and just throwing a hundred thousand dollars at it, because we don't know what we're throwing a hundred thousand dollars at. And Joe just pointed out, you know, and Nate just pointed out, the building is thirty-six by thirty-six. You know, it's not that big if you're going to take off a hunk of it too. So I think that that's what needs to be looked at first before any decision can be made as to what we should do, that's me.
Okay, Lorraine, I'm sorry, I missed you guys.
Oh, no, that's okay. Um, I guess if the footprint only allows, um, you know, a replacement of so, of so much, then, you know, you're kind of restrained on what you can do. Um, unless I'm mistaken, if you can go bigger than, you know, what the the original footprint was. But I think that that's a discussion that the Parks Commission can have about what the future plans would be for for John Pond. Um, they're always going to need a a storage, so maybe that's what the focus is right now and then any long term. You know, they can come up with a, you know, a bigger plan, because it it is a a prime real estate and it's it's being utilized and there's a lot of interest there. Uh, you know, for future, for future use, so. Future conversation, I guess. That's all.
Okay, thanks.
Um, I guess, Madam Chair, I have one more question, I'm sorry, Joe, to put you on the spot. But, you know, the park department spent fifty thousand dollars for a portable toilet, okay? What's going to happen with that?
Again, this is, this, this meaning is long capital plan, that stuff's in the past, we're looking towards, uh, other stuff. Uh, we're just talking about this building here now, I mean, I don't want to reinvent a wheel on something like that, yeah.
Okay, so we won't go there, so, um, is there bathrooms being proposed to this building?
No, not this time.
All right, so we got a problem there, okay? We got a problem not only with handicap accessibility, but we got a problem with, um, you know, bathrooms, you know, as well. And I'm sure Joe, Ari has told you that he's looking at some of the ARPA money to potentially, you know, bring a water line into that area or that facility. So I think there's a lot of things that need to be discussed, you know, about this before we even move forward with it, and that's just me.
Um, okay, and I mean, that is a, you know, valid point, I know the ARPA money. You know, we've talked about it at several selectmen's meetings, so, you know, we're trying to find a way to get that to the parks and everything. Um, I'm not quite sure if that's what this irrigation pump house is part, or if that's just so, maybe, um, Ari or Joe can explain uh, those three items right there, the Clear Pond Park shed, the lighting upgrade, and then the irrigation pump house for.
So what I'd like to do is do the shed and the pump house and then the lighting, because the lighting actually ties to a future year as well. And Nate is kind of the the in-house expert on that one anyway. Um, so the shed would be, um, twenty-five thousand and the idea would be to re- to replace the existing shed that's there at the entrance of Clear Pond with a pre-built structure of some sort. Um, removing the existing structure, putting it in and, you know, and then, um, you know, ensuring enough storage and and so on. Um, the, um, the, the pump house, um, I believe is a Ted Williams, this is this new pump house. Um, we'll be demoing the pump house regarding irrigation, um, and coming from wrong, Nate, but that would be integrated in with the, uh, with with the, with the, um, um, with the project we're working on right now, the water project as well.
Yeah, if we can, if we can integrate that in, that would be great. Um, just, just for, uh, additional clarification on the pump house, it it's relatively large, it's a, you know, probably around ten feet deep. Uh, masonry, uh, foundation with just, it looks like a root cellar, just has a roof about, uh, you know, just above grade. Um, they, the, it was the pump house that fed the fields at Ted Williams camp. Um, when the new well went in, and I'm not sure the exact year, uh, we did a smaller, uh, pump house, it's in wonderful shape. Instead of running, uh, new water lines to bypass the old pump house, we just ran the water line into the old pump house and then out. And, um, over the past seven years, I've spent probably, I don't know, four or five days, um, with some pumps pumping that out because a water line will break, it'll fill a truck full of water, it's a, it's just a, it's an eyesore, it's a, it's a danger. The old well pumps are still in the basement of it, um, and, you know, get it, get it out of there and and clean it up and make the parks a lot better.
Um, and then Nate, you want to?
I just want to say one more thing. And then also, if that pump house and pump get fixed, uh, excuse me, replaced, then we can tie in the police department into the irrigation system, which would save them a significant amount of money every year.
Right, and that's all going, you know, it's all being studied as part of the project as well, so, yeah.
Correct, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thank you. Um, so so Nate, do you want to, um, if, uh, I have a few questions on this first?
Then maybe. It's up to you, if you want me to give a quick, quick overview of the lighting piece, I I'll be happy to. If you want me to give a quick overview of the lighting piece, I I'd be happy to. If you want to, if you want to wait, or you if Joe wants to, that's fine, too.
Madam Chair, I don't know what you prefer.
Um, does anyone have any questions on the water as long as that's what we're talking about?
Okay, so let's let's do the lighting. It's a little more complicated. So Nate, why don't you go ahead?
All right. So for for a number of years, the the Ted Williams Camp, the lighting that's over near the tennis court hasn't been functioning. I know that probably. Seven or eight years ago, when it was when I I first started hearing it from from Lil, it was voting. People would go out there and, you know, it's still dark out. And then Joe knows that, you know, a lot of the times people are having functions, they're going out after dark, can't even see their cars. So over the last three or four years, we have reached out to Middleborough G and E. We've put some Middleborough G and E LED lights. I think there's probably eight or ten of them throughout the parks. I think I believe we pay. Twelve dollars or so a month a piece. There's no installation cost. There's no maintenance cost for replacement if a light goes out. Or if there's a sensor that goes, we just call Middleborough G and E, tell them the pole number, they go, they go replace it. Great for budgeting because we know it doesn't change. There's no utility cost. So we've started to do that. In twenty twenty, we had MV Electric go out there and and replace some lighting that was out on the side of the commissary building. Some wall packs and and some under portico lighting. At the same time, we had them evaluate those those parking lot lights near the near the tennis courts. We got a price. It was around right around four thousand dollars. I think I have it. Yeah, it's a thirty. Three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to just change the underground wiring. With the expectation that there's a really good chance that most of those lights won't work at this point. All in cost to change twelve of the existing lights to LEDs along with the underground wiring was ten thousand one hundred and eighty four dollars. That was March sixteenth of twenty twenty. So I did a quick check of product cost increases. And I came up with a number of fifteen thousand dollars to do that exact same project in today's numbers. After discussion with Ari, we we looked at some other opportunities. Middleborough G and E has been great to work with over the years. They offer an eight thousand dollar a year grant to the Tunnel Lakeville for a matching, a matching grant, fifty fifty. So we may be able to take that. I mean, fifteen thousand dollars is enough to do that first piece, but the fifteen thousand dollars may be enough with the matching grant. To light up that parking lot that's to the south of it. There's not a single light in the in the parking lot to the south. So, you know, if we can earmark the fifteen thousand dollars, it may be a combination of probably putting six more telephone poles in. Then contracted with Middleborough G and E to, you know, to, you know, put their LEDs on and and charge us a monthly fee a a piece. But. At least it's a starting point, you know, to get us where we need to be. It might be significantly less. Maybe if things don't go well with Middleborough G and E, it's a little more, but it's it's a start in the right direction. And it's probably the right number to do that.
Okay. Any questions? Brian?
Ari or Nate, could you explain in FY twenty four, the additional parking lot lights at TWC? Would that just be a continuation?
So that's the that's the that's the additional piece that I was just referring to that we could extend in. And Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a there was a placeholder figuring that if we were going to add parking lot to the lights to that south parking lot. That's a that's going to be around that number. So, like I said, I I think that there's an opportunity out there right now to do the whole thing for fifteen.
Okay, because that was going to be my question is if we're having somebody come out once to do lighting upgrade in twenty three, there's got to be some savings to have, hopefully, one company do both of them at once.
Yeah, I recommend you could, I recommend you consider twenty four to be a placeholder in case. Yeah, for if in case we have to go the conventional route. But if we if we get MG and E on board. And then we probably would save some money and we would need to do that. And since it is a placeholder for twenty four, yeah, better have it in for planning than not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else questions? No. Rich? Any questions on that one, Rich?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. Um, I think that takes us to the end of our capital items, correct?
Pretty much. I guess about your things, but, you know, if we can get into if you like, the hours are late, so it's up to the group. We like to do.
What what was that? I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
We have some items in the out years, I believe, you know, some of the, which I think are just placeholders, such as the Clear Pond Basketball Courts, the Clear Pond Bath House. The playground equipment and the and the repairs of snack bar. I don't know if Joe wants to talk about those at all. I'm sure he'd be happy to. To, you know, discuss those with the group if 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 we would like to hear them.
Again, one sort of placeholders, but there are items that we want to address in the in the coming years. That's all.
All right. I don't see anyone unmuting for a question, so I'm gonna say no questions. Or, Rich, do you have a question? You're unmuted. Okay.
Oh.
All right. Okay, so I think that takes us to the end of the meeting. The selectmen still have new business, old business to go over, but. At this point, I just want to review that we are going to meet again on March. Seventh.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And then Ari and the Capital Expenditures Committee, which I think Rich is on that, one member of the. Finance committees on that. My apologies. I don't remember who it is.
Adam Lynch's.
Okay, Adam. Okay, so then you guys will be able to look at all that stuff, too. And then we'll also revisit how the numbers have changed since then.
And in our mind, our in my in my mind, the liberals, the deliverables, excuse me, that we have for you for the seventh will be new budget pages. And the 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 debt service, the debt service projection. It's probably five years out, probably. And the those will be the two major products, right, Todd? Did I miss anything else?
Oh, that'll do it. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That that will give you a good basis to kind of, you know, decide decide. What what's a, you know, what's a what's a step up and what to hold serve on when it comes to the the capital plan, what what works for you. We're going to do everything we can. To show numbers that are, you know, that's smooth debt and accomplish our the goals to do. So we're pretty confident we'll be able to do that.
Okay. All right. So at this point, I'll let. The chairman of the Finance Committee close out your meeting, unless you have anything else.
Anyone on the Finance Committee have anything else to add this evening? Hearing none, I guess, can I have a motion to close the Finance Committee meeting?
So moved.
Second, okay, who vote? Larry?
Yes, hi.
Katie?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Adam?
Hi.
And Darren, I. Thank you. Have a good evening, and we'll look forward to meeting you guys on March seventh.
Okay, thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Good night. So for the selectmen, we have new business. Any new business? Any old business? All right. I will, I just want to say thank you to Christina. I know that you've been here, Tracy. I I see you there. Thank you to both of you. I know I asked for some copies to be printed last week and whatever, so I appreciate all your help, too. Todd, as always, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, aye.
Camera, aye.
Baby and I. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.